I'd like to call the Lane County Board of Commissioners back into session Tuesday, May 5th, and we are down to item 11A on our agenda, which is a public hearing for Order 150505-10 in the matter of annexing territory to the Lane Rural Fire and Rescue District to provide fire protection service to the annexed territory, Assessors Map 16063100, Tax Lot 00600. And we have Mark Rust.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. For the record, I'm Mark Rust with Lane County Land Management Division. And based on the item in front of you today, staff has reviewed the proposal for the fire district annexation and found that it does meet all the applicable approval criteria. As outlined in the written staff recommendation to you in your packet, we are recommending approval of this proposal. We recommend that you conduct the public hearing, and then based on the outcome of that, adopt the motion to approve. So if there's any other questions, I'm happy to provide answers.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Seeing the hearing none, then I'd like to open the public hearing on this. Is there anyone signed up for the public hearing? Somebody check back there? Okay, no one's signed up for the public hearing. I'll just ask real quick, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to this issue? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. And any discussion from the board? Commissioner Storick?
Mr. Chair, I've moved approval of 15-05-05-10, the matter of annexing territory to the Lane Rural Fire and Rescue District to provide fire protection service to the annexed territory, Assessors Map 16-06-31-00, Tax Lot 00600.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion to the motion? Seeing and hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Rust.
Thank you.
Hey, we're ahead of schedule. So we go to item 11B, which is a public hearing in Order 150505-11, in the matter of an appeal of the Board of Commissioners, to the Board of Commissioners, of a hearings official's decision denying a request for home occupation special use permit for an events venue for weddings, retirements, anniversaries, graduations, banquets, family reunions, meetings, dinners, and gatherings within the impacted four-some lands F2 zone, under Lane Code 162113N, MAP 18050640, Tax Lot 101, and its file number PA 509PA1405360. And we have Deanna Wright and company. So I want to announce that this public hearing is on the record as far as established by the hearings official for file 509PA1405360. Argument is limited to the issues already raised in the appeal and evidence in the record. Participation is limited to persons identified in the Board Order Number 15042112, which is the appellant's applicant owner, their representative, planning director, and/or other parties of record. I'd like to, before we move any further, call for measure of board members for ex parte contacts and for abstentions due to conflict interest, ex parte contacts, or biases. Any ex parte contacts on part of the board?
None.
None. Ben? I would like to note that I was contacted by folks on both the applicant and the appellant's side of this issue, and in all instances, I requested not to meet with those people, knowing that it could come before the board, to avoid ex parte contact, and that's all the contact I had, was the request for meetings on this issue and my refusal to take those And I also will note for the record that my wife and I hold a home occupancy permit, a home occupation permit for our rural residential property where we operate a business out of our home, so just for the record. Next, I'd like to call for the Planning Director's report, but before I go there, I just want to double-check what counsel, if you could quickly remind me exactly, as I described the record we're going to go on, there's been a couple of late written submissions, and I believe there's kind of a decision the board needs to make as to whether we're going to accept those written arguments, because they're more than a couple pages, and there's some code around five days in advance of the hearing, so if you could remind...
That's right. Chair Bozovich, this appeal is an on-the-record appeal, and it's covered by Lane Code 14.400. And there are really two separate issues to deal with. One is the one you mentioned, which, under 14400/7 of the code, talks about written materials, and the board can accept written materials that exceed two pages in length up to four days before the hearing, but not after that time period unless you make some special exception that the written materials met the criteria that are under subsection 7. In that regard, the applicant submitted a letter, and when I, in the subsection I'm talking about that deals with written materials, I interpret that, and we have interpreted that, to be legal argument, not new evidence, which is important, the next thing I'll talk about has to do with new evidence. So this is legal argument, and that is argument based on the facts that are already in the record that's in front of you now, that is in the record from the hearings official's hearings. The applicant submitted a letter constituting legal argument that came in late under that code section, and I can't remember what date that came in. Do you have that, Deanna? Oh, I think this, I think it's the, the letter dated May 5, that came in from Kim O'Day, who represents the applicant here, and it was, it's dated the 5th, actually it came, I think, yesterday is when I saw it, so it's within that five-day period under the code. It doesn't get to come in unless the board can make certain findings. Somehow I keep losing my section.
May 5th, or, sorry, Monday, May 4th at 5:25 PM, submitted by the applicant.
Yeah, so it's within that five-day period. The only way it gets to come in is if the board decides it can come in, and to do that, you need to answer in the affirmative basically three criteria, which are seven A, B, and C. And the first of those is that the written materials are solely responsive to the written material submitted, to other written materials submitted at least five days in advance. The second one is that the response of written materials could not have been reasonably prepared and submitted at least five days in advance, and then C, the copies have been provided to all parties on the record in this appeal. My read of those three criterias that maybe C was met, but I don't see any justification under A or B for allowing in the late written comment, because I don't read Ms. O'Day's latest submission as being solely responsive to other written materials that were submitted in a timely fashion. These are basically new, not new legal arguments, but legal arguments that have been made throughout this case, but they're not, for example, responsive to legal arguments submitted by opponents in the matter before you. The second one is that these, the criteria is that these couldn't have been submitted within the correct time period. I don't see any justification in the materials themselves as to why they're not, why they're late, and so I'm not, I don't think that that criterion is met either, so.
So before we leave that issue, is there any questions for staff as to whether the letter that was received yesterday from Ms. O'Day is admissible into this hearing for part of our record and part of our decision?
I suppose I should note, Commissioner Bozovich, for the board's consideration, the arguments made are essentially sort of a summary of the arguments that have been made throughout this case, as I understand it, including in front of the hearings official. In addition, Ms. O'Day is here, and I'm sure will give you legal arguments and essentially cover what's in her written materials already in oral fashion, and so the board won't be going without, for example.
Yeah, that's kind of what, why I asked the question somewhat, is it seemed like it was an advanced written copy of what we're going to hear in oral testimony, so I didn't know if it was admissible or not, and I wanted to get that clarified, because there was a question by the other appellant, which is always interesting, we have two appellants in this, in this case, the other appellant, that Ms. O'Day's letter was not, couldn't be included as part of the record. There are no further questions about that, if you want to go on and maybe just clarify exactly what we're allowed to make our decision based on?
For this particular...
Hearing.
Letter?
No. It sounds like for the letter that you've recommended that it should not be included, and I'm not hearing any objections from the board to your recommendation.
Correct, and I think on that, the board has to decide that, that you're not going to...
We need to have a...
Except for review.
Have an affirmative vote, one way or the other.
That's best, yes.
Should that happen now before we open the public hearing, you think?
Whatever's convenient, you can do it now or at the end of the matter, if it's on, you know, your mental agenda now, it makes sense to do it, I think.
So is there any discussion on this matter or a motion at this time, or we want to wait and do that later?
I guess I would move that both letters that were received from the appellants ought to be included in the record.
There a second?
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded not to include the two letters that were received in the last two days here as part of the record. Is there any discussion to the motion? Seeing and hearing none, I'll call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. They will not be considered part of the record.
There was one other issue I alluded to.
Two pages. They're over the two pages.
Oh. There is some additional written material that came in that Ms. Wright has put together. It's basically 90, 91 pages of additional stuff. My read of that is some of it, while it came in timely, that is more than five days before this hearing today, much of it is evidentiary in nature rather than legal argument in nature, and therefore I think it's properly excluded from the board's consideration today as well as from the record. When it's time for the landwatch appellants, I think, to speak, specifically if Sean Malone wants to speak to this, there are some matters in here that Mr. Malone has submitted to you, that is more than five days before this hearing, but as I see it, it's basically stuff that's already in the record, that is legal argument and letters from Mr. Malone to the hearings official that are in the record already. That stuff is fine for you to consider, because as I say, it's in the record already. There are some other additional items in there, specifically email and statements that I don't see as legal argument, but rather evidentiary based, and those, in my opinion, should be excluded, including, and I guess I better run through them just so we're clear what we're talking about, you don't have these because they weren't forwarded to you. The first one, the first one is an April 29, I think, a statement from David and Tracy Engel, if I'm saying that right, regarding Grand Hollow Events Venue, and as I say, I haven't had time to read through all of these in detail, but my scan through the hair is essentially this is a recap of evidentiary statements that we probably made earlier, I'm guessing in the record, but more to the point, they're not legal argument, and as such, they're beyond the scope of the hearing today, because we're in on-the-record hearing today, and it's limited to the factual evidence that's in the record as well as additional legal argument, but this board has the option, if it wishes, to reopen the record, to put more evidence into the record if you want to, and that discussion is held in 14400/2 and 2/3. There are some criteria that need to be met there before you can do that, and if you do that, you can open it up and take new evidence yourself, or you can remand it to the hearings official for him to take in additional evidence. My recommendation is you not go there, because I don't think the criteria that allow you to do that have been met. As I said, as I read it, most of this testimony evidence is already in the record, to the extent it's not, it should have been put in the record earlier, and now it's not timely. So that's the first one. There is another from, 13, there's another one from J. Thompson, which is an email to Ms. Wright that came in Thursday. I read that the same way, it's not legal argument, it's evidentiary in nature. There is another one from an email address of Lapping, stop.
Salad.
I'm sorry, Lapping, salad. I don't know if there's a...
Alan Walter, Heather Redwine Walter.
Oh, yeah, okay. Walters. There's another email from Dee Briggs, David Briggs. And then I get down to an email from Mr. Malone, which, as I understand it and see here, it's essentially forwarding to Ms. Wright, again, matters that, or letters and argument that he submitted to the hearings official already. You can consider that because it's in the record already. Sorry this has taken a while, but it's a lot of pages of stuff. Do you have a... Yeah, the next one is from Jan Hall, again, it's an email to Ms. Wright, 30th. John McKellum is the next one. Again, these are, unless I say otherwise, I consider most of this to be evidentiary matters and therefore not appropriate at this time. Carol Huddleston is another one, and then Charlie Payne. Dennis Payne, and Darlene Payne. More stuff from Lonnie Huddleston. And Ms. O'Day has submitted material, which is the letter we already talked about, the legal argument that came in a couple of days ago. Yesterday. Yeah, and I think that's it. The other stuff I referred to is, oh, the letter from Mr. Malone that came in today, I think it was, but that's the one that you already spoke to, which was responsive to Ms. O'Day's late letter. And one final one from Lori Siegel. And I think, again, I think it's new evidence and is properly excluded by the board. What I would say with respect to all of those that I went through, that if, for example, Mr. Malone wants to make an argument that some of the stuff that I'm suggesting be excluded because it's evidence and not legal argument, if he's got counter position, he can make that, but again, that's my recommendation, that the board exclude all of those documents I just read off, except for, as I say, the legal argument that came in from Sean Malone as part of the hearings official's record.
So do we need a motion relative to that also?
Yeah, I would do the same sort of motion and order for, as you just did, yes.
So I'll look to the board to make a motion to exclude the email that were sent that are evidentiary after the close of the record for the hearings official's decision?
Could we separate each one? So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion to the motion? Commissioner Sorenson?
So the combined argument and facts would be excluded by this motion? Are you saying that argument should be excluded from this proceeding?
No, and just to recap for the board, Commissioner Sorenson and Chair Bozovich, when I say argument is allowed, what I'm saying is legal arguments that are based on evidence that's already in the record in front of the hearings official is permissible. When I'm recommending this board exclude, and when I understand the motion to be, is to exclude evidentiary material, not the legal argument to the evidence, and that is either new evidence or simply a recap of evidence that's already in the record and therefore is duplicative.
Well, but to make an argument, you have to say, "The light was red, therefore the defendant is responsible for the accident." You've restated a fact in order to make your argument, so I think I'd be more comfortable with saying that new evidence that's contained in this, that's not in the record below, would be excluded, but to say that we're going to exclude argument because it restates a fact, then it seems to me that we've denied a fundamental right of people in these proceedings to make their argument. If they can't say, "The light was red, and therefore the defendant is responsible for the motor vehicle accident," because they're excluded from stating a fact, then their argument becomes one of jumping up and down on the table and saying, "We should win."
That's not what I'm suggesting.
Okay, good. Good.
And that's not what the motion stated.
But the motion says we're going to exclude the argument.
The motion is to exclude new evidence and pure evidence that's simply duplicative of what's in the record. A recitation of evidence that's in the record already, which is recited for the purpose of making a legal argument, is permitted because it's part of the legal argument, the application of law to the facts.
And anything in this material that is argument is going to be then considered and considered by the record.
Correct, and as I get, my definition of argument is the application of the law to evidence in the record.
So with that clarification about what the motion actually does, is there any further discussion of the motion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes for one. The email evidence submitted past the close of the hearing official's record will not be admitted into this hearing. So are you going to further discuss what we're allowed to make our decision on here? Want to just move into the public?
I think so, yeah. I mean, this, I guess, just, yeah, to recap, it is an on-the-record hearing, and so what you should hear from here today as part of the hearing will be legal argument, that is application of law to existing facts in the record.
Okay, so with that understood, we'll move on to the Planning Director's report, and then we'll go into the hearing. So with that, Deanna.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Deanna Wright for the record. Excuse me, I'm getting a little cold, so I might cough. The item for you today is an appeal of a hearings official decision denying a request for a home occupation special use permit for an event venue. This is the second time this application has been appealed, once at the Planning Director level, and now at the hearing, and now the hearings official denial has been appealed by two different appellants. The applicant owner appealed the decision and requested the board hear the appeal, and the other appellant is Sean Malone, representing Lane County, I'm sorry, Landwatch Lane County and others. Sean Malone has requested the board not hear the appeal. The board held a meeting on April 21st, 2015, to consider whether or not to conduct a public hearing on the matter. The board agreed to met appeal criteria to hear the appeal, which brings us to this hearing on the matter today. I'm not going to repeat the background items I discussed in the earlier board meeting staff report, but rather I will focus on some of the appeal matters at hand today. The appeal issues for the applicant appellant centers around the issues of noise and traffic. In relation to the approval criteria, Lane Code requires that home occupation not unreasonably interfere with existing uses in the zoning of nearby lands. The burden of proof is upon the applicant to prove that this criteria is met, which is usually done by an analysis of nearby lands and the review of potential negative impacts derived from the proposal. If interference is identified, the applicant can either suggest, or the county can require specific conditions of approval to reduce or mitigate the interference if it is justifiably feasible. Alternatively, the proposal can be either modified to reduce the interference, or the proposal can either be denied, or the proposal can be denied absent sufficient information to make a positive finding on the criteria of approval. So before I get started discussing the noise issue, I just wanted to bring up some maps to get acquainted with the property and the area. Starting right here with the subject property, you can see it's a little highlighted right here, and it's accessed off of Fleck Road, running east-west, and to the north you can hardly see Perkins Road. This is Maryland Drive, and I think this is Green Ridge Drive, if I'm reading that This is a more up-close map of the subject property. It can be generally divided into three sections. The north section here contains some forest and a pretty substantial BPA easement. The center of the property contains more forest areas, and the development, as far as the structures go, are generally located in the south of the property. And here's an even more up-close area of the development. The applicant proposes to use what they're calling the pavilion for the majority of the events venue. This structure right here is another ag building, and this is the dwelling. And this right here is Fleck Road, where they're going to be accessing the subject property, and generally, sorry, running north-south here is the easterly boundary of the subject This is the site plan that the applicant submitted of the entire property. This site plan here shows a more detail of their proposal. Again, here's the pavilion, the dwelling, the proposed parking area, an alternative ceremony site, and additional parking over here, and this would be Fleck Road. As for the noise issue, the applicant agree, argues that the proposal can meet the Lane Code noise standards, so by that definition, his proposal cannot unreasonably interfere with uses of nearby lands. The thing to highlight here in relation to the hearings official stance is he believes that the home occupation criteria of unreasonably interfere takes into account noise-sensitive uses that may be well above the ambient noise levels of some rural neighborhoods and well above the Lane County noise standards. The applicant did conduct a noise study by an acoustical professional. And here, it's not the best map, but this is the map that the acoustical professional did insert into the noise study, and here it would be the pavilion at location A, and location B, H, is B, E, D, C, F, G, H, and those are the seven locations where they did test noise. What the study resulted is, in the daytime, noise levels exceeded three of seven locations, and the nighttime noise levels exceeded all seven locations. and the nighttime noise levels exceeded all seven locations. The options suggested by the acoustical professional were to partially enclose the pavilion structure and to turn down the music after 10:00 p.m. So here is a layout of the existing pavilion structure. This south wall right here is already walled, and it's open on the east-west and the north sides right now. So what they're proposing is to enclose the structure on the east side and the west side and to keep the north end open. And they're also going to propose to turn the music down at 10:00 p.m. The HO stated that the application did not measure the ambient noise of the area and compare it to the noise during the event. He is saying this lack of evidence result in a consistency flaw because there was no way to measure if the proposal triggered the unreasonable interference criteria. Both in the Newman case and in this one, the HO believed consistency is largely determined by the character of the area and then land uses taking place. The policy question for the board here is, is the hearings official attempt to measure noise impacts reasonable in relation to criteria of the unreasonably interfere? And two, does meeting the noise ordinance mean the proposal meets the unreasonably interfere criteria of Lane Code? As for the traffic issue, the HO concluded that a 25% increase of up to four times a week is an unreasonable interference with the reasonable expectations of the local area residents. The applicant appellant disagrees. The 25% increase number came from computing the average vehicle occupancy of 2.9 persons per vehicle, resulting in 172 round-trip vehicle trips, and comparing it to the average approximate of 750 vehicle trips per day on Fleck Road, a rural Lane County minor collector classified road. The applicant owner argues that the HO assumed a right to known change in its classifications, and that there are other uses allowed on the zoning that could exceed that which is proposed. Additionally, the applicant owner believes that one cannot use traffic on a county road to evaluate the unreasonably interfere criteria, because it is a public road. The question for the board is whether the conclusion can be made based off the evidence in the record that traffic will be an unreasonable interference. Landwatch Lane County and other appellants argue that the application should be denied. Sean Malone, representing Landwatch Lane County and others, listed 17 different reasons of denial in his appeal statement. I'm going to let the appellants speak to their issues and concerns rather than discuss each item at this point. Staff does want to end with a discussion on agricultural building conversions. The pavilion was approved as an agricultural building in 2013 permit. The applicant seems to want to maintain the use of a structure as an ag building, as a barn, but does not object to obtaining the necessary building permits. They assert that the building could readily return to its use as an agricultural building when no longer used as a home occupation. Landwatch believes that the hearings official misconstrued whether an agricultural building can be converted to another use. No citation was provided in the appeal statement, but staff presumes that Landwatch is arguing that Lane Code 16211 subsection 2N does not allow the conversions of an agricultural building to another use, and that the proposed home occupation requires such a conversion. The Lane Code section related to home occupation building requires that these structures meet building and sanitation requirements under Lane Code 16211 3N, Section VI. The hearings official did not address this criterion in detail. His decision stated, "This criterion could be addressed through conditions of approval." The burden is on the applicant to address how the home occupation criteria mentioned above is met. It appears that additional building and sanitation permits will be required in order for the building to meet occupancy standards for gatherings under the state building code. It is unknown at this time if meeting the building code occupancy standard would constitute a conversion of agricultural building to another use. And again, it's still the applicant's burden to show how the home occupation building standard and Lane Code 16211 2N is met. This concludes my staff report at this time, and I'm able to answer any questions should be arise. Thank you.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Thank you. One of the issues in the case in front of the hearings official was how to interpret the noise standard. And my understanding is that, you mentioned in your staff report just now, that the applicant conducted a noise study. But as I read Mr. Darniel's decision, he stated that the noise report was on noise that could be generated from events that were occurring on the property when they were doing these weddings and parties and celebrations. And that the applicant did submit a study that showed how much noise would come from that type of activity. But the code uses a fairly vague language like "unreasonably," what's the term, "unreasonably?"
Interfere.
Interfere, "unreasonably interferes." So Mr. Darniel said, "Well, there was no background or ambient noise test done, so you're not really comparing sort of before and after, or before and maybe after. You're comparing maybe after." So how can we make a determination about whether or not this will unreasonably affect the quality of the neighborhood with the type of noise test that was submitted? Doesn't seem like we're able to make that conclusion. Maybe it was noisier before, now it's less noisy, in which case it wouldn't unreasonably affect. Or maybe it was quiet before, and now it's noisy, in which case we could conclude that it is, it would unreasonably interfere. What do you think about that test issue?
So it looks like the hearings official did state, "The applicant did not measure the ambient noise of the area and compare it to the noise during the event." So what I was thinking is, he thought there was no test to make an assumption on, or conclusion on, the noise before the event and the noise during the event. So does that answer your question? So there wasn't enough evidence in the record for him to make a conclusion?
So the way he resolved this issue, whether there's a before and after test, or before and predicted after, is he resolved it by saying, "Well, since there was no before test, there is no evidence in the record, one could conclude that the applicant had demonstrated that they could meet the standard."
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, then I'd like to move on to the hearing. And I'd like to open the public hearing, and I'd like to invite the applicant to speak first.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I just want to say that, again, yes, that letter was late, and I apologize. There was no, there was nothing posted, the staff report wasn't posted five days ahead. I had no hyperlink. Perhaps I should have asked, but when I inquired, she said that the person posted and went on vacation. I might have been sick, so it might have been late. So once I figured it was late, I thought I'd cover all the issues. In summary format, we're going to get to them again today, so that the board has decided not to accept that letter. It's okay, I'm just going to take more time, which is unfortunate, because I think that could have limited the amount of time I was going to be up here. I do think that if the board wants to remand, if we get through this entire hearing and the board feels that there's not enough noise evidence in the record to support a finding of approval, I do think that the board could remand this back to the hearings official for additional evidence, because we have lots of evidence in the record regarding noise, and that the standard keeps moving around. We had the Newman decision, we had the way some other home occupations have been treated using the actual noise standard of Lane Code. I don't think we could have anticipated that the hearings official was going to go sideways and ask us for even more evidence. We have only evidence in the record about noise. We have another noise expert having an opinion about our noise, but there's no additional noise evidence in the record but ours. So I do think that if more evidence on noise is needed, that it falls within that criteria to send it back. If you decide to do that, please interpret the standard first, so that the hearings official has some guidance as to how unreasonably interfere, what it actually means. And the last introductory statement, I think I can deal with Mr. Sorenson's concern. If you go to our noise standard, every single point has ambient noise listed. Ambient noise was measured at every single point. All I have to do is look at the noise analysis. So I'm going to read the important parts of this letter in, and I promise you, it will not be as long as this letter is, because some of this is just quoting language. And then I'm going to comment on it briefly, and I'm going to try to get out of your way. Okay? "This home occupation is governed by LC 16211 3N, is allowed use in the F2 zone if appropriate criteria are met. Eleven criteria apply," and you can stop me at any point if you have questions, okay? "The hearings official found that the proposal was consistent, either outright or with conditions, but all but one standard, which is LC 16211 3N 5. The bulk of this letter addresses that standard. This application has been muddied by poor interpretations by the hearings official. The issues on appeal are addressed by the plain language of the code, past practice, and past decisions. If those elements had been applied in the first instance, this appeal would not have been necessary. This appeal requires an interpretation of the phrase 'unreasonably interfere.' The applicant feels that this interpretation should be made by the board, the legislative body that enacted the code. Once that interpretation is made, if the board feels that additional noise evidence is needed, it is within the board's discretion to send the issue back to the hearings official with direction for reconsideration and a limited evidentiary hearing. If the board feels there's sufficient evidence to support the approval, the applicant requests that it do so. The applicant offers to draft findings for staff and the board in support of approval, and staff can review and edit those." So response to the staff report, under noise, on page 6, paragraph 4, the applicant, the staff correctly states that the burden of proof is on the applicant to prove that this criteria is met, which is usually done by an analysis of the nearby lands and the review of the potential negative impacts derived from the proposal. If interference is identified, the applicant can either suggest, or the county can require specific conditions of approval to reduce or mitigate the interference, if it is justifiably feasible. Alternatively, the proposal can either be modified to reduce the interference, or the proposal may be denied absent sufficient information to make a positive finding." End of quote. "The applicant has followed this direction to the T either as extensive analysis of nearby lands and review of potential negative impacts. As originally proposed, without the pavilion being walled, evidence showed a negative impact. The sound professional proposed modifications that would reduce impacts to a level that was acceptable under the code. The applicant modified the proposal to incorporate those modifications, plus a bunch of other things that modified the impacts, such as noise monitoring, noise reporting, a sound meter, and an automatic noise limiter at the property lines. All of the applicant's conclusions are supported by hard evidence produced by noise experts, traffic experts, and water experts. In fact, the applicant is the only party that has hard quantitative evidence in the record. As stated in the board staff report, the hearings official found two deficiencies in the applicant's noise evidence. The first one was that, and this is quoted, "It was assumed but never demonstrated that the trees on the property would provide adequate mitigation of noise from the pavilion to those properties to the north." So we're down to the two main elements of this appeal. So past, and then staff and the hearings official go on to cite past events being noisy to the north. Past events are not relevant as they were not conducted in a manner consistent with the subject proposal. Past events were not in the enclosed pavilion, they were loud, they were private, and they were more present. All that is true. Those events are not the type of events that are being proposed under this proposal. It's been scaled back substantially. This application's got to be judged on its own. The noise analysis submitted established that noise from the proposal will not unreasonably interfere with lands to the north. The applicant's noise analysis took readings at seven neighboring properties, and Deanna had them up on there. Exhibit B of the noise analysis shows where all those are. The pavilion is marked at A. Deanna, could you put that back up there?
The noise studying one?
Yeah. And it is hard to see. So the pavilion's marked at A, and it's slightly angled northwestern. So it's just slightly angled, it's not due north, but it's slightly angled kind of northwest. Except for that portion of that far north while, the entire structure will be walled, and not just walled, these are engineered walls, insulated engineered acoustical glass, done by an acoustical engineer. So he knew the parameters with which this would be walled. The pavilion sits to the south of points B and E. It's already south. So the open portion of the pavilion has already been addressed on these sites. There is no opposition from the neighbor to the west. For noise to reach the neighbors that are farther north, and my point here is that we've already taken point measurements that are farther north than the pavilion. For the noise to reach neighbors that are farther north than points B and E, sound must travel through 20 acres of mature timber and undergrowth and buzzing high-power BPA lines. There's a lot of noise up there. More to the point, because B and E are closer to the pavilion than any of the other properties to the north, and because the applicant has already established that noise from this use will not unreasonably interfere with those neighbors, it can be found that the use will not unreasonably interfere with neighbors that are even farther away. In addition, proposed conditions of approval that further limit noise impacts will ensure that noise is addressed for all properties and ongoing home occupation review. And this is an important point. This doesn't go away completely after today. Home occupations are very, they're very unique in that one year from today, if we get an approval, we have to prove that we're meeting the elements within our approval, and that the conditions of approval are being met. And then after we do that every two years for the rest of the home occupation, we have to come back and ensure that all of our conditions and all the elements of our home occupation are being met. There's some ongoing assurances to the neighbors that if we have good conditions and we do things appropriately, that we have to continue to meet them. I'll discuss that in greater detail. The second issue in the staff report to the board, that there was no way to confirm a baseline measurement that compares normal ambient noise to the noise generated by the event. So the applicant's noise study, which is in the record for every single point, lists ambient noise. Ambient noise was addressed every single time. You can see tables A through H in that report. Staff then goes on to repeat the hearings official's position on why the neighborhood should be given a higher level of protection than the rest of Lane County, and why this case is different than Newman. "There's no evidence in the record that this neighborhood is any more peaceful than any other neighborhood in Lane County." That's conjecture. In fact, when the list of uses is reviewed that are allowed or conditionally allowed in the zone, this neighborhood is potentially louder and subject to more externalities than the neighborhood in Newman, because you can do industrial forest operations and industrial agricultural operations with the neighborhood itself. Furthermore, there is no reasoned argument to set a noise standard for home occupations that is stricter than the noise standard for all other uses and residents in Lane County. It should be noted that the director has a history of using the noise ordinance, which is Lane Code 5615, as a baseline for determining whether uses shall not create significant impacts on nearby lands. Niemeyer was a recent case, and that case was approved, and it's really unclear and puzzling to the applicant why that wasn't carried over for this application, okay? But more to the point, and I'm going to talk about this in great detail, because I'm frustrated with this issue. As a board, the county determined what kind of noise is reasonable in the county. That's why you created the noise ordinance, and we're going to go through exactly what that says. And to say, and I'm not saying that the board defined what's unreasonable, but they certainly went through when they enacted the noise ordinance and decided what was reasonable. And you could see that from the purpose statement of the noise ordinance. And to say that, if you can come in and you're below the noise ordinance, that you can somehow unreasonably interfere to hold home occupations and any other use to a higher standard than what any other resident of Lane County is obligated to do, is, I don't know how we get there. So right now, today, if we're neighbors, and I'm shouting and jumping and partying, and I'm within the noise readings, I can do that. I'm not interfering with you based on the noise ordinance. And suddenly, because I'm now applying for home occupation, I don't get the same benefit and same entitlement as every other person in Lane County. It just, that begs justification. It just, that begs justification somehow. Traffic, the noise traffic issue, that's, I'm going to address that a little bit later on in greater detail. Transportation planning staff has reviewed the applicant's TIA and found that the proposed use can operate safely. I don't always talk this much. I'm getting exhausted. Operate safely and that the use will not exceed the carrying capacity or change. You're used to hearing this much wordage from Bill Close, but generally, I try to be a little smaller than Bill. So transportation planning staff has reviewed the applicant's TIA, and a TIA was required in this case, and found that the proposed use can operate safely and that the use will not exceed the carrying capacity or change the functional classification of Fleck Road. Public use of the roadway in a manner consistent with its classification is part of the makeup of a neighborhood and the county. If the board supports the HO's interpretation, it will be a slippery slope where available road capacity is eroded, application by application. I think this is really important. As soon as you start asking yourself, can people stop traffic flow on a public road because they feel the noise unreasonably interferes? That's a really slippery slope to suddenly finding out one day that there are enough uses around that you can no longer use the capacity on your road system. Roads are loud. They have a functional classification. They have, they're designed to carry traffic up and down, up and down, up and down, up and down. They're just noisy. That's the way they are. And they're noisy within the scope of their allowed use. And that's a function of their classification, not a function of how they're operating today as opposed to how they're going to operate tomorrow. It's anticipated that they're going to get used to their capacity. That's what they're there for. So that, the applicant endorses the hearings official's findings on all of land watches issues. So I might even go through those. So I'm not going through this whole letter. I promise you, I'm getting to the two points that I have, and then I'll hit the other points because they really weren't part of our appeal, but they were things I heard the board have concerns about when they were considering whether or not to hear this appeal. And then I will let it go. Hit a few high points and let it go. So the hearings official denied the application under the following: Shall not reasonably interfere with existing uses permitted by zoning. So that's existing uses that are permitted. Or with any other uses allowed by Lane Code 2112. So that's a whole bunch of uses with a lot of externalities that we're considering here. Not just what's currently on site. And I think that was a fundamental flaw that the hearings official didn't consider. This standard, this substantially interfere, unreasonably interfere, shall not interfere, is used all over the code in a whole lot of different zoning districts for a whole lot of different uses. This interpretation today is going to have far-reaching effects. There's just, there's no getting around to it. So I really, really want to make sure that we get it right or send it back if we have to, whatever it needs to get this done. So unreasonable interference is a higher threshold than no interference. It's got to, such the simple act of exceeding the ambient status quo of the neighborhood, like the hearings official would have you do, does not by itself rise to the level of unreasonable interference. So if you've got an ambient status quo, you get interference. That's not the standard. The standard's unreasonable. So you can't apply the status quo. That wouldn't be unreasonable. To be unreasonable, the interference must be excessive. It has to unreasonably interfere. It's another element that we didn't get to. Central to this appeal is the meaning of the term "unreasonably interfere." As a matter of common usage, unreasonable interference is something more than mere interference or no interference. It's a higher bar. The interference must rise to a level of being unreasonable. However, the HO interpreted the phrase to mean something akin to no interference, which just isn't the standard. The HO interpreted unreasonable stating, "I believe that a significant change in the normal environment of the neighborhood would constitute an unreasonable interference. Whether use unreasonably interferes depends on whether it's excessive, given the circumstances and the reasonable expectations have affected residents' consideration zoning and their property." The applicant agrees with the hearings official that unreasonable interference is excessive interference. I think that's a great interpretation of something that's unreasonable. Is it excessive or not? That would be unreasonable. However, the hearings official then goes on to suggest that local residents are entitled to continued ambient noise level and the status quo, and that any increase beyond that threshold is excessive and becomes unreasonable interference. This is an extremely narrow and onerous reading of unreasonable interfere that is not supported by past board decisions, the county code, or common usage. Under the hearings official's interpretation, a neighborhood could never change or grow. Uses allowed in the zone which do not already exist could not crop up, and areas would stagnate. If you can have no change, no interference, things cannot move. They can't. And again, the standard's unreasonable, excessive interference. So what is unreasonable interference? As stated above, I think the hearings official started down the correct path. I think unreasonable interference is excessive interference. I think he got that right. This interpretation is even supported by Webster's Third Dictionary, which is the one Luba likes to use, so I got to quote it. So it says excessive, the synonym, excessive describes whatever notably exceeds the reasonable. That's the definition. See also reasonable. Reasonable is not excessive. This interpretation is supported by the board's past interpretation in Newman. In Newman, the standard was "shall not interfere." That's slightly different. That was even stricter because this is not unreasonably interfere. That was simply not interfere. And as discussed above, the standard is stricter than not unreasonably interfere. Yet even under the stricter standard, the board found that a neighborhood is not entitled to the status quo and ambient sound levels. The board dealt with it spot on. Hearings official tried the same approach. The board said, no, that would stop all movement in the county. That's not right. The facts in Newman are similar to the facts here. The Newman application was for home occupation for special events venue for weddings, businesses, and conferences. The home occupation utilized a pole building. In that case, it was classified as an accessory structure with bathrooms, consulting rooms, and changing rooms. Hours were 9:00 AM to sunset, May through October. Attendance was up to 150 people. And the major difference was that Newman is in our R10, heads in F2. But in Newman, the board made findings that are directly relevant to this appeal. The board found that residents of a neighborhood are not entitled to the status quo, our standard of no interference. And I'll pull from this that it says, "Lane County has legislatively determined that new uses of property involving increased activity, traffic, and sound may be conditionally introduced into an area of rural residential use." 16231 provides for the potential approval of a variety of uses that may be conditionally introduced into such an area in addition to home occupations. Those include, but are not limited to churches, cemeteries, group homes, lodges, range halls. The provisions for such conditional uses precludes the notion that residential areas are to remain static in use and limit only to the use and enjoyment of lands for strictly residential purposes. It has found that Lane County provisions for the potential of a variety of uses and sound sources within the rural residential zones legislatively creates the presumption and an expectation that livability within the rural residential zone includes the conditional introduction of a variety of uses and sound sources. Right out of the board's decision, same situation here. Yes, we're zone F2, but we're surrounded by RR. So to the extent that the neighbors are impacted, those are all the RR uses allowed. And we have the additional uses that are allowed in the F2 zone, which can be loud and obnoxious, as we know. While the head property is zoned F2 rather than RR, the same set of underlying facts exist. Many uses are allowed conditionally in the F2 zone, including, but not limited to, found a typo, private parks, public parks, campgrounds, fire stations, transportation, solid waste disposal sites, mass gatherings, mining and processing, and youth camps. These uses have a variety of externalities, including noise and traffic. Land adjacent to and around the subject property is zoned RRR, EFU, and F2. The RR zone, as discussed above, has lots of externalities. As such, there's nothing unique about the subject neighborhood that would afford it, and this is a higher quote from Newman, afforded a higher degree of peace and quiet or additional protection from the sound and activity generated by a new use in the area. It is a typical rural neighborhood containing a mix of zoning and a mix of existing and allowed uses. The board found that the Lane Code noise ordinance is relevant in determining whether noise from a use will interfere on nearby lands. One of the elements in Newman was whether or not they met the noise ordinance. I mean, it was pretty consistent. It's a discreet standard that actually has some numbers to it. Of course, it's a good baseline for all the reasons we're about to set out. In summary, the applicant urges the board to adopt the hearings official's determination of unreasonable interference as being excessive interference because such an interpretation is supported by the plain meaning of unreasonable and the underlying reasoning and logic in Newman. The applicant urges the board to reject the hearings official's interpretation that the baseline for determining unreasonable interference is the ambient condition of the neighborhood and the status quo because that interpretation directly conflicts with the board. All right. I'm going to get to it. Okay, noise from the use does not result in unreasonable interference because the applicant has established compliance with Lane Code 5.65615, which is the baseline that establishes acceptable noise level throughout the county. Noise below that standard is an entitlement. Furthermore, the applicant has proposed conditions of approval that go beyond compliance with 5.615 to ensure that the use will not unreasonably interfere. I'm just going to read you the findings. There's no question that noise can lead to unreasonable interference, okay? But to determine that, you need a baseline. And if you can understand that unreasonable noise is excessive noise, then as we discussed earlier, the board has already made a legislative determination, at least as to what reasonable is. Because the finding of LC 5.600 states, "The Board of Commissioners of Lane County finds that excessive noise, sounds, can and does constitute a hazard to the health, safety, welfare, and quality of the life of citizens of the county. While certain activities are essential to the economic, social, and political education and technical advancements of the citizens of the county necessarily require the production of sound which may offend, disrupt, intrude, or otherwise create hardship among the citizenry. Unregulated sound is a nuisance and some limitation and regulation must be imposed on the production of excessive sound to reduce the delirious effects of those sounds. It is therefore the policy of Lane County to prevent and regulate excessive sound." That is the purpose statement of the noise ordinance of Lane Code. So based on the above, the purpose of the noise ordinance is to regulate sound that may excessively, excessively offend, disrupt, intrude, or otherwise create a hardship. In other words, the purpose of the noise ordinance is to regulate sound that might unreasonably interfere. The hearings official dismisses this, but the Lane County noise ordinance applies countywide. Just as I discussed, it's a baseline for what's reasonable. And then beyond that, beyond making a showing that if we do these improvements to the structure, which are big, thick, insulated walls, that our sound measurements will be below what everybody else in Lane County is entitled to, the applicant also offered to install an automated sound monitoring system. These are called DB readers and sensors up at the property lines to the east, south, and west. This was deemed to be an acceptable mitigation measure in the Niemeyer decision for a wedding venue. They'll also install an automatic limiter on the DJ system. No matter how much he messes with it, it can't go up upon a certain DBA. This was also acceptable in the Niemeyer decision. They'll take noise measurements for every event and keep a log. They'll provide that log to the county at annual review. They'll comply with all the noise mitigation measures proposed by the noise expert, including engineered walls. And if the DBA exceeded, they'll turn it down. We'll ensure that 80% of the use occurs within the walled pavilion. That standard of 80% was established in the green case in front of Luba. So we didn't just make that up. Luba said 80%. That's what you got to do. We'll prohibit any amplified noise at the outdoor ceremony area, which is located in the woods away from the property lines. Limiting attendance, limiting to use more than four times a week. The event ahead signage that's required in the conditions will slow traffic and reduce noise traffic. And the agreement is to set up the amplified music in the pavilion, as you saw on the wall there, so that the speakers and the DJ face west into a wall, not out the opening. And all the speakers are angled into the dance area. So I think there's lots of evidence in the record that the noise standard has been met. Not just meeting the noise standard, but all the other things on top of it that the applicant has agreed to do. If you feel like more neat, like I said, if you want more noise evidence, we can produce noise. It kept moving. It's hard, it's hard for an applicant to come forward, especially when the standards aren't applied consistently, and try to guess what staff is going to need and try to guess what the hearings official's going to need. We gave it our best shot. If you need more noise, we're happy to get it to you if you want to send it back to the hearings official. Last issue that's actually an appeal issue for the applicant is that traffic noise from the use does not result in unreasonable interference because the applicant established and staff has concurred that based on traffic volume, the use can operate safely and within the functional classification of Fleck Road. The board and the director have consistently applied the standard to mean, can you be safe on the road? Can you use the public road system with your home occupation safely and efficiently and not change the classification? So this new noise element is a new interpretation. The hearings official found that the applicant had proven, and transportation staff had concurred, that as condition, Fleck Road could be safely used. And the number of vehicles anticipated for the use would not have a significant impact on the capacity or functional use of the road and would not result in the reclassification of the road. However, he said that despite that proof, the proposal still violated the standard because an increase in traffic, of noise from traffic on a public road could be unreasonable interference. The hearings official attempted this in Newman as well. So is that case a good read? He argued that the use negatively impacted the use of bikes and horseback riding on a public road, and that created unreasonable interference. The board flatly rejected that. The board found that the neighborhood was not entitled to the status quo or the ambient noise. There was a legislative presumption and expectation that the neighborhood would be subject to the uses and noises allowed by the zone, and this included the use of public roadways. The board's decision in Newman sets good precedent. This one really bothers me. "The county road system is intended to carry vehicles and provide for growth. Each road is given a classification and is constructed to carry traffic consistent with that classification. Safe use of the public roadway is consistent with its classification and level of service and cannot result in unreasonable interference. Use of a public roadway within the parameters of its functional classification is expected and anticipated." It is an entitlement, an entitlement that the county needs to be able to use. The board has already made this policy choice on the issue by accepting Fleck Road as a public road. In Newman, the board determined there was nothing special about the neighborhood that would require it from automobile traffic that does not exceed the carrying capacity[1692.16] or functional use of the road. This is basically just a twist on the argument we've already done. The board went all the way through it. Here, just as in, the TIA wasn't required in Newman. We had a TIA and transportation staff agreed that we could use it safely. That's sufficient. So those are the two issues that we brought up on appeal. I heard the board, when they were considering whether or not to hear this appeal, be concerned about whether a barn and an accessory structure for that matter could be used for home occupation. So I'm going to hit on this just briefly because I think it's important and it's already been decided by Luba. It's a done deal. "The use can operate lawfully within a pavilion because both a barn and accessory structure are allowed in the zone, and there have been no modifications to the structure that would prohibit its return to a barn or accessory structure use." The hearing's official got this right, obviously. "Use of a pavilion as part of a home occupation is allowed under the plain language of the code." It doesn't say anything about whether or not you can do improvements to your structure. It says, "shall be operated substantially in other existing buildings normally associated with the use," and you can't build a new building that wouldn't otherwise be allowed in the code. That's what the code says. We just adopt all the hearing's official's findings on this. He goes through in great detail, does a great job. This issue's already been addressed by Luba in Joseph versus Land County, or Luba 41 1989. "Use of an agricultural building are allowed regardless of improvements, no requirement for the building to contain an agricultural use while the home occupation is in effect, and no requirement to change the land use classification of a building just because of improvements." Same issue came up. Luba said, "No." That would, just like the hearing's official said, that would undermine home occupations. If just because you had to do improvements to your barn to operate your home occupation, you no longer have a barn. Catch 22. This issue was indirectly in front of Luba in green, which you've heard a whole lot about in this case. That was a pavilion. That land, it was an agricultural structure, and the use of the agricultural structure was allowed in both cases. In short, opposition, and to some extent, I think the building staff is confusing building code classification with uses allowed by the land use code. Just because improvements are made to a structure under the building code, for example, in this case, improvements required because of occupancy, the number of people, for safety, the status of the underlying land use does not change. Here, because of the nature of the use, building staff is requiring upgrades. However, none of those upgrades prohibit the applicant from using the structure for farm use. If you dress up pig, still pig. Just as the hearing's official states, "The purpose is not to ensure that the use of the building remains an agricultural use, as that would preclude its use as a home occupation, defeating the purpose of the statute." And the Lane County has a long history of allowing accessory structures and agricultural structures to be used in conjunction with home occupations. So that issue is pretty well resolved, and it makes sense. I mean, there was some discussion below about, you know, if it's too nice, too beautiful, it can't be a barn, and nobody's spending time in Kentucky because I would do anything to live in those horse barns. I truly would. Chandeliers and heating systems. The improvements, they don't stop it from then just being used as an agricultural structure. They just keep people safe who are using it. There's been some talk about whether home occupations are allowed in the forest zone. The proposed use is allowed in a forest zone because it's specifically provided by statute and furthermore, it can be conducted without interfering with the forestry use in this place. Again, hearing's official did a great job of going through all of those. But I would say, particular to this application, as staff pointed out, there's a lot of trees on this property, and everything except for the alternate site, which was already cleared, didn't require any tree clearing, is in the already developed area. And so just like in any forest operation, you can run your cattle under the trees. It doesn't interfere with your forest operation or any other use of land. People are meandering under the forestry operations here, but it's a limited number of people. It's not like the big events venue that was up in northeast Lane County that had like thousands of people. I can't remember what it's called right now. Here, the rest of the site is continuing as a forest operation. We put everything down. People are milling around in the trees. There are a few footpaths into the trees, but other than that, trees are continuing to grow. There's nothing that we've done that stops the continued use of the property as it was used before to continue in forest operations. I think that's just unique to the way this one. I'm not saying that that has to be that way for every home occupation, but it's unique to this one. And the last little piece, and I am not going to go through in great detail because you've already got it, is that because the hearing's official didn't approve the application, he didn't address the director's conditions of approval. There was a lot of back and forth over those. Now, some of those conditions of approval actually conflict with the hearing's official's findings about agricultural structures and the need to change classification. There's also several of the conditions that staff agreed down below to remove, and that was condition 15 and condition 21. So if we get to approval of this, the applicant and staff can figure out which one of those are inconsistent now, your findings and the ones that we agreed to take out to begin with. But I think, I think that's it. Let me check my notes and I will get down. I just want to make sure I got everything. You know, I know you're tired of hearing my voice at this point. It's better that I talk than stinging, so that's good. I think that's it. So I'm here for any questions. If you have any apologies for the length of that, it would have been nice if you could just be taking notes on the side of the letter, but I understand.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant appellant? Then we'll move on to statements from the other appellant. If I have the correct order, Andy, is that, I think we're supposed to do the applicant and the appellants first. Oh, so.
Actually, Chair Bozick, the order is the applicant's representative than anyone else who wants to speak in favor of the application before we get to.
I didn't know, because there are two appeal appellants on this. I want to make sure it was clear. Okay. So the folks we have signed up in favor would be the next folks to speak. And I'll remind folks that you need to address the evidence that's in the record and make arguments based on the evidence that's in the record, not introduce new evidence to the board. I had speaking in favor, I have Lisa Ahern. Lisa Ahern is marked as in favor. Is that accurate or?
She just walked out of the presentation line.
Oh, okay.
All of you.
Thank you. Then I will switch to statements of persons in opposition. I assume we can start with the other appellant with that. So I'll call Sean Malone first.
Good afternoon to the commissioner, Sean Malone, on behalf of appellant Land Watch Lane County, as well as a host of neighbors to the proposed events center. Just to clarify initially, so this is my opportunity to address not only what I see wrong with the applicant's appeal, but also those alternative grounds for which I think the hearing's official's decision should be upheld. Is that correct?
Correct. It's your opportunity to address both, yeah, both your grounds of appeal and also issues that have been brought up by the applicant.
Thank you. As you said, it's kind of an unusual situation here. The first thing I'd like to talk about is the many emails that came in from neighbors. I counseled them to not include any additional new evidence, but again, to focus on those legal issues that we've appealed or that are on appeal from the applicant. So there is a, I suppose, a possibility that within those 90 pages, there might be some duplicative information, but I do think that it is, I don't think there is additional evidence in there, and it's legal argument to the extent that, I think one issue that it really goes to is what we were talking about here, unreasonable interference, because these are the individuals that are being unreasonably interfered with. So I think their arguments are more than germane to the issue. So to the extent we can separate out all of that, I think much of that information should still be in the record, but I will leave it at that. And I've also counseled them to here today to only talk about matters that are at issue here today, no new evidence. The first thing I'd like to talk about is, we'll just dive into it here, the noise issue. I really think that the applicant in her statement here has completely missed the issue on which the hearing's official based his decision, in essence. If we look at the Lane Code for home occupations, the standard is unreasonably interfere. It is not, go look at the Lane County noise ordinance. Had the board intended for the Lane County noise ordinance to be used, it's likely that they would have said that. Instead, what the board did in enacting that provision is use the phrase, "unreasonably interfere." Now, that phrase actually comes from the statute, the home occupation statute. So to the extent that the board would have been creating any additional deference in their interpretation of that, I think that's questionable because this home occupation ordinance is implementing a statute, and that "unreasonably interfere" language comes straight from the statute. So I think the issue here, a close reading of the hearing's official's decision focuses on administrative rule, a fairly new administrative rule, and I'm not quite sure yet, I'm looking into it, whether this administrative rule was promulgated before or after Newman, this Newman case. It's actually a planning action. I don't believe it was ever on appeal to the Landys' Board of Appeals. And that is OAR 340-035-0035. There's a bunch of subsections here, sub 1, sub little b, sub big B, sub little i. And essentially what that does is for new industrial and commercial uses on property that previously was not used for commercial industrial uses, the maximum increase in sound or noise is 10 dBa, and that's in essence, a doubling of the noise. And the hearing's official cited that in a footnote and looked to that as an analog in order to determine what's unreasonably interfere. And let me just quote from the hearing's official, because I think he does a really great job, and it's actually very eloquently written. And he's referring to this DEQ administrative rule. "It must be remembered that the DEQ standards are applied to commercial and industrial uses, which normally are located near other commercial industrial uses. It is a tolerant standard because the ambient sound level in a commercial and/or industrial area is expected to be higher. Nevertheless, these standards recognize that noise generation in excess of 10 dBa above ambient is excessive, as it is a doubling of the existing sound level." So he looks at this, where it should be more tolerant, let's assume, in areas of commercial industrialization, but taking that same standard and applying it to a residential area, that's, I think fundamentally, where the hearing's official got to this unreasonable interference because they're doubling it. In a existing passive resource area with residences, I think that's a fair standard to imply or to use. And I didn't hear opposing counsel refer to that at all, and I think that's a significant omission because I think that really gets the crux of the issue here. Really use this administrative rule as context in which to interpret unreasonably interfere. So I think that's a very important point. Moving on to Newman, simply factually distinct here, let's just run through the distinctions. The number of people limited there was limited to 150. Here, it's limited to 250. So we have 100 more people in this place than we did in Newman. There, the hours were from 9:00 AM to sunset, May through October. Here, the events can go as late as 11:00 PM with all the staff and so forth required to leave until midnight. This goes on all year, four days a week, no stopping. I mean, in essence, you could have eight events in a row, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. There's really no end to the amount of interference with these neighboring properties here, at least in terms of noise and other issues. There's overwhelming evidence in the record. The hearing's official explicitly found that it is, the nature, the character of the neighborhood is these passive resource uses in residential properties. So to the extent that there's no basis in the record to assume that this particular neighborhood is a quiet neighborhood, there's more than substantial evidence in the record on that issue. And then this notion, was there a question? This notion that is coming out of the applicant's argument that unreasonable interference has nothing to do with the existing conditions, for me, is just beyond the pale. It's impossible for me to determine how neighboring individuals would be unreasonably interfered with if we don't understand what that baseline in the neighborhood is. If we instead just say that the standard should be based on the maximum possible noise in any zone, then I think we've lost ourselves. It's become so amorphous, I mean, there's no basis to even determine anything at that point. We're just engaging in conjecture at that point in time. Again, if the board wanted to use Lane County noise ordinance for home occupation, very well could have said that, but used this language from the statute. And I think another issue that's been kind of lost here is noise from traffic. And what the applicant was referring to is that the road itself could safely carry these additional cars. But the fact of the matter is that the cars themselves generate noise, not just on the public road, but as they're entering this gravelled, dusty parking lot, two parking lots on the property, idling engines, boisterous people, inebriated folks after weddings, playing their car stereos. None of that noise, none of those noise impacts were taken into account when he, as far as I understand him, with the measurements contained in applicant's cusco engineer. In addition, another point, the cusco engineer only took measurements at certain points within each of these properties, so let's say closest to the house of one of the neighbors. They didn't do it close to the property line. So that would then mean that while you might be safe in your house, if you're going to go on a walk around your property, that's not taken into account here, too. So there's tremendous issues here. Unless the board has any questions, I'll move on to traffic, and I'll be brief on that So hypothetical question, what other uses in the surrounding zones would place the same traffic burden on the neighborhood? I can't think of any that would place 250 additional cars, that sort of impact on this neighborhood. Not only could I not think of any, but the hearing's official couldn't think of any either. He knows this stuff. He said, quote unquote here, "Given the use is allowed in the surrounding zoning districts, I can think of no other use allowed in the study area that would place a similar year-round load on the local road system. I believe it is an unreasonable interference with the reasonable expectations of the local area residents to place what amounts to an urban commercial use within their midst." I think that really gets to the point here, an urban commercial use. This has no placement in this area. Home occupations were intended to be these small types of things, not these large events And in addition to unreasonable interference related to traffic, the neighbors have had strangers trespassing on their property, pulling into their driveways, all of these other issues that are related to traffic. Now, moving on to the alternative grounds, the home occupation is not appropriate in a forest environment. We're in an F2 zone here. The recent case, Lindstromberg v. Lane County, the county was reversed based on this very issue. We have perhaps a degree less here of that issue, but I think that allowing this operation in a forest zone would, you could anticipate another reversal from Luba. Second point, there's nothing to demonstrate that 80% of the events venue will be operated within the venue. The wedding is in a, ceremonies are held in a clearing outside. There's bathroom facilities outside. The entire property was transformed so that people can go outside, enjoy a drink by the lake or the pond, or walk to the poolhouse, setting up and taking down wedding decorations throughout the property. Wedding photography takes place outside on the public road. We have pictures in the record of individuals with wine glasses on the public road, taking photos of them, you know, this is what we do in wedding photos. So it's just not feasible to control 250 people at a wedding, especially when you only have five employees that are allowed to do this. I'll get there later. Now, the issue that Ms. O'Day was getting at for whether a ag building can be converted into a home occupation, I think Ms. O'Day is missing the point there just a little bit. The issue is whether there was an existing agricultural building. Under the home occupation ordinance, you cannot build a structure to house your home occupation. It has to be existing. Now, what did the applicant do in this case? He went to the planning department, got an agricultural building permitted, said a lot of things in that, and this is all in the record. Said, you know, I'm going to engage in the farmer's market and, I don't know, get some chickens, things like that. Pure, pure pretext. And what he did then is then pursue this, what he calls a lodge, you know, and he built that lodge specifically for this home occupation. You're not allowed to do that. There's no evidence in the record that any agricultural operation has ever even occurred related to that agricultural building. Now, let's look at this. There's tremendous pictures in the record here, and I urge you to take a look. Their Facebook account really hurts them because they're putting it all up there for everyone to see. up there for everyone to see, including the neighbors. This agricultural structure, or yeah, this, I don't know, they call it a pavilion, they call it a lodge, they call it agricultural structure, it has a bar for alcohol fixed into the ground, you didn't see that on the diagram that showed the DJ thing. There's a concrete floor, I've never seen a barn with a concrete floor, they make it difficult to clean up after things, huge fireplace, massive fireplace inside this agricultural building, four pretty big nice chandeliers are in. And although I didn't see these when I was there, or I didn't see them on the Facebook photos, other advertisements indicate that there was a, they're proposing a kitchen, they're proposing bathrooms, and they're also proposing projectors in the barn. So I think it's, again, very important to go to the Facebook exhibits that we submitted and look at the quotes from them while they're building this structure. Ask yourself, are they building an agricultural structure for some sort of agricultural project? No, they're building this Grand Hollow's Events Lodge. Here's a quote from the Facebook, their Facebook page, "A vision made into reality. Grand Hollow's Lodge will be complete in less than two weeks. Final photos to come." And they're taking photos the whole time. As it's going up, this is supposed to be the Grand Hollow's Lodge, not an agricultural building. Gaming the system, complete derogation of this county's land use laws as well as our comprehensive statewide land use system, this is what I find frustrating. Another quote, "The finishing touches are going in at Grand Hollow's. We love this restoration hardware chandelier and have four being installed right now in the lodge." The lodge is being created, it's not a previously existing structure as it was in Newman or any of these other home occupation cases, they specifically went under preference to get this agricultural permit and then build the Grand Hollow's Lodge. And you're not allowed to do that, you have to have an existing building under the home occupation ordinance. So the building was not existing and is not one that would be permitted in an F2 zone. Imagine if the applicant would have gone to the planning department and said, "I want an agricultural building with concrete floors, chandeliers, projectors, a bar that serves alcohol, it's got like a fridge in it and everything," they would be, they would kind of throw up their hands and say, "Well, what kind of agricultural endeavor are you engaging in?" And so I don't think that this lodge would have been permitted. So I think that is a big issue, and I think, again, the applicant misses the point there because it's not about whether it can be converted, it's whether it's existing. Was this lodge built solely to house this home occupation? And then the fourth and final point that I'll touch upon here is, "The event center will exceed five employees." Now, I've never had to watch over 250 people, but I don't think I can do it, I don't think me and four other people can do it, especially with all the other stuff that's going on in a wedding. Caterers, servers, florists, disc jockey, bartender, cleanup staff, parking attendants, which a previous condition of approval said there had to be four. Now, Lube has interpreted this to mean five employees at a time. So the point is how the applicant was required to demonstrate that it is possible to do this, to engage in this tremendous event center with only five employees operating at a single time. And all these other conditions of approval that they're proposing related to noise, those are going to require other people to be monitoring this stuff, to monitor it effectively. If someone has, if someone's wearing 20 different hats in this wedding ceremony and they're also trying to monitor the noise, noise is gonna, it's gonna go by the wayside. So listen what the hearings official said. "How the applicant expects to juggle these individuals so that no more than five are on the subject property at any one time during a large event is a mystery. And I am sure that those testifying in opposition to this application are skeptical." They are. Because if the hearings official acknowledges that it's a mystery how this is ever going to occur, how can you satisfy that legal standard that a condition of approval must be feasible if it's a mystery? Absent any questions from the board, I would ask that you uphold the hearings official's decision on these alternative grounds or on the grounds provided by the hearings official. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll move to statements in opposition. Other persons opposed the application, so first person I have listed is Karolyi Payne. I'm going to limit for expedience these statements to three minutes max because I let the attorneys for either side have a lengthy time unlimited.
So you're probably going to have to cut me off a little bit because I read it and it's a little bit longer than that. But I'm Karolyi Payne and I live at 25617 Fleck Road. I would like to see this application denied again due to the unsurmountable issues that come along with this proposal. First of all, this is a commercial business, trying to force its way into a country setting. Trying to treat this application as a home occupancy business is a disgrace. Just because you hire an attorney that has been able to push the law doesn't give the county the right to just turn a blind eye. This isn't about growing the community, helping with employment, or providing business for the city of Anita. This is one man that will profit at the expense of the surrounding neighbors. It should be inconceivable that this venue is approved with all the violations that are taking place. It's an absolute shame that the majority of neighbors surrounding the property have had to invest so much time, money, energy, and resources into defending our rights as rural property owners to stop one man from running a commercial business disguised as a home occupancy business. So even though this was denied by the commissioner, the planning commissioner and the hearings official, it does seem that there's a disconnection in the decision process of what's being allowed, what's being conditioned, and what's being denied. I believe the county needs to stop allowing and conditioning the manipulation of laws and guidelines to try and accommodate such applications. We have continued to point out the violations and reasons that this venue should not be approved, and although the denials have been in our favor, it seems that the county is making it difficult for us opposing while giving all credence and leeway to the applicant. On several points, the hearings official states the conditions are satisfied by just simply that the applicant warrants or attests that it will be that way. How is that acceptable? One rule for the home occupancy business is that you can't have more than five employees on the site at one given time. We submitted evidence from vendors stating that you need more than five just for service, we have pictures that show that they've already done it in the past. You simply cannot host a wedding of 250 guests with five or less employees when one of them has to be the business operator, one of them's your wedding coordinator, and the two or four traffic controllers that are needed. Yet in the memo that you got, it says, quote, "The applicant attests it can be done. As such, it is listed as a recommended condition of approval and the hearings official found it met the criteria." Well, I attest it cannot be done. There is just no way that someone paying $6,000 to $12,000 for this venue is going to be limited to five employees. This venue's not a potluck style park, it's intended to be a high-end sit-down dinner, and as such, that criteria just cannot be met. And you cannot circumvent this by saying, "Well, we'll have volunteers or we'll have people that come in and help," because it really doesn't state that they have to be paid, it just says you can't have more than five at a time. There's another point where the requirement is that the events have to mainly be indoors. This applicant warrants that 80 to 90% of the events will occur within the pavilion. So I ask you, if you paid $8,000 for your child or for yourself to be married at Grand Hollow's, Lane County's premier year-round indoor/outdoor wedding and event venue, as it is advertised, are you going to be okay with forcing your guests to stay mainly indoors on a 75, 85-degree summer afternoon? I highly doubt it. But the applicant warrants that-
You could wrap up and get to the rest of the folks signed up.
Okay. And the, I'll tell you the onsite scale, his plan, he says the pavilion is not within 250 feet of the dwelling, it's over 350, so his onsite drawing is not to scale, it's not accurate, I've asked for it to be accurate because I think that would mitigate some of the issues, and I guess that would be done.
Thank you. And the next I have signed up is, it looks like Tim Payne. If you remember to limit your comments to the record that's existing for the hearings official and your arguments.
My name's Tim Payne and I live at 25617 Fleck Road. I've lived there since 1997, and from the pavilion to our house is approximately 500 feet away, and I have been home during the two of the weddings he held last summer with my daughter, who is seven years old, and the music, the crowd noise cannot be mitigated, and it's not strictly music. Crowd noise, the vehicles, you can hear the vehicles, they travel back and forth, there will be vendors traveling back and forth on the road that is only 500 feet from our house, and this will be going on in evenings, late at night, we go to bed early, and there is no way to mitigate this. And they hired an acoustical consultant to show how they could mitigate it. So we hired an actual acoustical engineer who said it couldn't be done. And this will greatly affect our livability, traffic, no matter what, you can't mitigate the traffic, and you have to look at how it will distract, we ride our bikes, we walk on Fleck Road, and when you have 250 people coming to this event in a short period of time, how will that harm people? It's an unfamiliar road to all these people because a lot of them come from out of town, they will be leaving late at night, there are several corners, a stop sign, and there have already been several accidents on the road, and then there's wildlife, I've hit several deer on that road myself, and they travel at nighttime, so these are all issues that haven't been brought up or addressed properly. Another one that I'd like to bring up, that we have brought up before, is water. And they told us that they'd bring in potable water to cover the issues, but no mention was made to how they're going to irrigate this property, and there are well over five acres, underground sprinklers, how much water is it going to take out of our aquifer out in that area? We have a very limited supply, as everybody in the neighborhood can attest to how much water, this is going to be a strain this summer especially. And then, can we bring up that plot plan, the larger one? We have brought this up several times, that this plot plan, no matter how you, the bigger one, yeah, no matter how you scale it out with the ruler, it does not scale properly. Now, I'm a builder and anytime I have to submit a plot plan to the county, if it's not to scale, they deny it. So how can you show that there's proper access for fire vehicles to get down to the pavilion, are there proper parking spaces? Even the buildings, some are not shown on there, the actual egg building one is not drawn properly on there, all the scales are wrong. It shows a seasonal creek, yet that creek is gone now and is considered a pond that was not permitted properly, and that is under review right now by the water master, and he has dammed up the creek, which is also under review right now by the OBF and W, and they're seeing if that is a fish-bearing stream, and he has blocked that off. And we've brought up that the wetlands is under review too because there is possible violations there. But according to this plot plan, it is very hard to justify what is where, how big the parking area is, is there ample parking, is there ample fire and safety area to get a fire truck back to the pavilion? And fire danger is another one that kind of got dismissed. This is in a heavily forested area, as the attorney said, so, and there's walking trails out there, so what happens in October, late September, when we're in extreme fire danger? Who's going to be out there saying, you know, when people are drinking, all it takes is one errant cigarette to land out there? There's no access roads to get out there for this, per vista, there is a fire, so how is that going to be addressed? And the bottom line, this is a commercial operation. He had his attorney try and convert it, home occupancy, when you have 250 customers coming four times a week, that is a commercial operation. Plain and simple, that's everything.
Thank you. Jan Hall?
Jan Hall, and I live across the road from Grand Hollow's, just south of them. I've lived there for 35 years, my husband and I raised our kids there, and my grandkids are there frequently. Noise on my porch was totally, really, really bad. I took a walk the evening of the biggest wedding, which they had 300, supposedly 370 people there, and that was a half a mile, I went up Green Ridge, I could hear the words to every single song. And that's not okay, we've got kids, we've got animals, animals were disturbed north through supposedly the trees stopping the information. The traffic is unreasonable. I was sitting in my house with all my windows and doors shut at 11 o'clock at night, and I heard noise, and I walked to the end of my driveway, and there was two huge touring buses which had delivered the people earlier, standing on the road with the motors on, the lights on, loading people up, and cars going in and out of the driveway trying to get somebody who was trying to direct them. To me, that's not safe.
Ms. Hall, if I could interrupt for a minute, is this evidence that was presented to the hearings official, or are you presenting new evidence?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Okay, because I want to be clear that we're not to hear new evidence that wasn't-
This is all evidence I've submitted to the hearings official.
So, and I presume that this is going to lead to an argument for, a legal argument, not just reciting evidence at this point, so, go ahead and continue.
The first time I met Andy was when they first moved in, and we were talking about, my husband and I were going to remodel our house, and I said, "I don't know how to do the permit process." He says, "Don't worry about it, we're in the country, go and do what you want to do, they're not going to notice." And that's what it seems to be all the way along. There's compliance issues, the ponds, the wetlands, took the dirt from the ponds, put it on the wetlands, I personally saw five huge dump truck loads of gravel going on the dirt that had been on the wetlands. That's not okay, there's billiard wood pickers in the area, there's all sorts of Sharps and Cooper's hawks nesting in this area. The noise of the people in the evenings is really, really, really loud. The, when the hearings official took a tour of the area, there was, he was asked about the pond house, which hadn't been in the original proposal, and the hearings official asked if the barn was being used, the original barn, and he said, "No." We have pictures online of the dressing rooms that were built, supposedly haystacks, with a bathroom, with great big rooms with fully enclosed windows. There's another compliance issue, there is a three-bedroom, two-bath apartment upstairs that's being occupied, in a barn, an agricultural building, that you can't have two residences on one property. The main thing I want to say is please keep our rural areas rural. This is too big an operation to be where it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Rindi Spicer, my husband and I reside at 25410 Fleck Road. We've been there since 2000. I think a lot of what you're going to hear is reiteration of what we submitted and talking over and over again. Bottom line, we're against this operation, it's a commercial venue coming into our neighborhood. I heard Ms. O'Day speak to, you know, halting the neighborhoods and not allowing growth. I don't think that anybody in a residential neighborhood goes and finds their home, their future home, the American dream of where you're going to settle and raise your children, and that plan on development knowing there's a commercial operation. Had I known that a commercial operation was going to be built, I wouldn't buy this home. I have a three-year-old child, she just turned four. The night of the last wedding, I had to put her to bed three times that night from windows rattling. I mean, it's a complete intrusion upon our life. We have to put cones in our driveway to prevent people to drive in our drive, you know, there's a note in there that he needs to replace his culvert so that, to allow for the number of traffic coming in. Well, do we need ours replaced, that's our question. You know, there's a wedding planned for July 3rd that's coming up, that's online, you can see for Grand Hollow's, that's planned for a well-known family in town. And our question is, do we have to police this? Do we have to put up with it? At what point in time do we as a neighborhood know that our homes are protected? So that night, 4th of July weekend, are we allowed to go with our families and go have 4th of July celebrations? Or do we need to be at home policing, taking pictures, protecting our home from the intrusion of traffic? You know, we're talking 250 people times four, we're looking at 52,000 people per year coming in our neighborhood. Roads are built externally for the amount of load and traffic, each road is built individually and engineered properly. This road was not developed for the idea- This road was not developed for the idea of having vendors with charter buses coming in parked in front of our homes, which is what happened at the last wedding for 45 minutes. Shh, shh. We all know that sound of a touring bus. They stink, they smell, they're loud. Is it reasonable for that bus to be in front of our home for almost an hour at 11 o'clock at night while our children are trying to sleep? It, it's just, it's unbelievable to me to try and squeeze in under an ordinance of, well, we're meeting the ambient level by this amount. Bottom line, nobody wants this in front of their home. We're very passionate about this. Nobody would buy their dream home knowing that this is going in. A home occupation is designed for the, a small operation. You know, I don't know to the extent of yours, but it's, you know, this, this is designed for small operations. What's the ruling behind five people employees? Well, that's to keep the numbers down. So if we can only have, allow five employees, why are we allowing 250 people? What's the, why would we even have the rule for five people? Bottom line, this is an intrusion and it unreasonably interferes with our way of life. And it is a very peaceful neighborhood. And those ambient levels were not taken at 7 o'clock, 8 o'clock, 9 o'clock, when we're going to bed and our children are being put to bed. Those levels were not recorded. This is unreasonable, interferes with our home. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So I also have John McCollum.
Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak here today. My name is John McCollum. My wife Laura and I live at 25380 Fleck Road, about 1,200 feet west of the applicant's property line. We have owned our property for 39 years. It has been a great place to raise our kids and now our grandchildren. I am supporting the original denial of this application, so I please enforce the letter and spirit of our land use laws. Here are some of the points that I spoke to at the previous hearing. Was the application originally deceptive or fraudulent? I cannot know, obviously, the applicant's intentions. But as far as I know, none of the buildings have been used for agriculture. The buildings have been built from day one as a commercial wedding event center. One possible interpretation of it, this is a deliberate attempt to deceive in certain land use laws. Noise is one of our major concerns from our property. The main sound is the crowd noise. I would describe the noise that we hear as an irritating intrusion. From our vantage point, the sound level tests are meaningless because they don't measure the crowd noise. And that's the main thing that we hear. And as a 40-year resident, I regard myself as an acoustical expert on the ambient sound level at night, which is about zero. Individual cars go by and a dog barks and that's about it, and the wind. The fire danger, I wasn't, unclear about the hearings officer's decision. There will be thousands of customers attending this business. Some will drink, some will smoke, and not just tobacco. The hearings officer said that no smoking signs will mitigate fire danger. That seems like kind of a sick joke. We all know that tipsy partygoers will ignore those signs. Some kids who want to smoke a joint will probably sneak off in the bushes so that grandma won't see them. They might hide behind the no smoking sign. I've seen a fire right, in a property right across our road, race across a 10-acre field before the fire trucks could arrive. And I was looking today as we came in, some of the trees on the property and his property come more than halfway across the road. And in one couple of points, the trees on both sides almost meet, so that there's just no fire break from the road if that gets out of hand. And the water availability isn't our big concern of ours. Fleck Road is notorious for having poor water. In the late 1970s, the water level in our well was at 170 feet down. The well driller said that the bedrock was at 90 feet. It did not get any water flow from the rock. All of the water was in the soil above. Last summer I sounded the well, the water level was at 87 and a half feet. That indicates there's only two and a half feet of water-bearing soil supplying us. A few years ago, the pump in our well burned out when the water got too low. We were right up against the wall in our water situation. All of our water comes from the soil and none from the rock below. Therefore, the applicant's water study, which talks about water in the bedrock, is meaningless to our water problem. And the point about traffic safety, and I'll wrap up, is that you look at the numbers out. If he meets his goals, he'll have 30,000 to 40,000 people a year in there. Looking out at 10 years, we could have a quarter million people, many of them drinking and driving on our road. And how many does it take to lump one of us off? That's a lot of people that we, I think is a terrible intrusion of our area. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last I have signed up and didn't mark if they were in opposition or not is Lori Siegel.
I'm Lori Siegel and I reside at 1210 East 29th Place in Eugene. And I'm opposed to the application. Thank you for your time today. The single fam, there's, the subject property's developed with several properties. There's a single-family dwelling. It's originally built in 63. Then in 2007, it was enlarged. It's now 15, about 5,900 square feet and there's another 1,080 square foot garage. So a total of 6,980 square feet. And then there's an Ag Building that was permitted in 1981 as a mobile home placement. And then in 2009, an 1,825 square foot Ag Building was approved. And then in 2013, a 5,380 square foot Ag Building was approved. So, you know, I haven't been on the subject property. It's unclear whether some of these might, some of these square footages might be additions to what was there originally. And then the Pond House, I don't know what that is. I can't find any permits for anything like that, but I don't know what that is. But it exists also. One of the problems that we, with this application is that the scale and the frequency of the proposed uses aren't consistent with the intent of allowed uses in the zone, including home occupations. Because home occupations are limited in ways the Grand Hollow Event Center has shown it doesn't comply with, and people have spoken to that. The Grand Hollow Event Center should actually be expected to comply with the recently adopted outdoor assembly ordinance instead, where five, there's not a limit of five employees. The problem with, for Grand Hollows is probably that outdoor assemblies, as you all know, are limited in number per year and much more so than this. It's evidence from the permitting history, as you've heard, that the Ag Building referred to as a lodge was built and designed for large-scale outdoor-related events, like outdoor assemblies, not to accommodate horses and other livestock. The original application for one of the Ag Buildings, I don't remember, was the 1,800 or the 5,300 square foot one, actually said there'd be horses. State law doesn't allow these structures, structures to be built in resource zone for the purpose of a home occupation. It has to already be there, has already been said. But the applicant's Facebook page substantiates that this has been being built to provide services for weddings and events. I also wanted to mention that, based on what I heard on the board meeting on the 21st of April, that I think that there's some misconceptions about Oregon's land use laws because they actually have changed significantly over the years, over the last 40 years. And there's actually a lot more uses allowed on resource land than there were when the land use laws were adopted. But really, what hasn't changed much over the last 40 years is the deferral program. And so the problem with the proliferation of non-resourced uses, especially the illegal ones, is that the deferrals remain. You're not changing the zone. And so, in this case, they've got 39 acres. Five acres is set out for non-deferral, but the rest of the acreage remains in deferral, but it's not really being managed as was intended with the land use planning program. The reason for the deferrals was to encourage people to contribute to the commercial resource economy, the commercial resource economy. Thank you.
Thanks. Sure. Go ahead and if you'll state your name and address for the record.
My name's Daniel Walter. I live at 87243 Green Ridge Drive on Vinita. Could you real quick pull up the picture with, it's like the most recent, close-in? Yeah. So, can I borrow your... All right. So this building right here, we didn't get to see that.
If you could stand where the mic picks you up.
Sorry.
That's our record.
So the, the secondary building, and I think that Ms. Lacy was talking about that as well, that's a whole second residence. There's a huge shop underneath. He's basically doing car repairs, staging a bunch of stuff, putting things in there. It's, it's not even an Ag Building anymore. He's got residence upstairs. They have pictures of it from when he had his website on the Facebook. Bathrooms, bedrooms, a real big to-do. And there's, you know, everybody else has touched on the secondary Ag Building, the chicken coop with the chandeliers, so I won't beat that one with a dead horse. All to be said, this is going to be a nightclub in the middle of our community. You know, this is something that's going to see more traffic flow than a nightclub in Eugene downtown. And to put that in the middle of our community, I see no substantiation for that, along with the handwritten application, not to, not to code. I'm still troubled as to how this has gotten this far and that we've spent so much time fighting something that never should have made it that far. And, yeah, I'm definitely concerned about 30,000 to 50,000 extra people in my neighborhood and people drinking and driving. I don't know if there's statistics on how many people get caught on a weekend in Eugene drinking and driving, but if you put that kind of traffic flow on a rural road where there's no sheriffs regularly patrolling and supposedly having under five people manage all of this, with the last one being well over 300 people and hearing every word of it rattling my windows, it wasn't a good situation. So, I thank you guys for your time.
Thank you. And I know it's a little bit out of order, but Ms. O'Day, I noticed that some people came back in a room that we skipped over because they were out of the room when we asked their name, do they want to testify or not, because they're signed up on the sheet. So, we'll move on to any additional statements from the planning director this time. And then rebuttal from the applicant.
I'm going to go backwards and I'm going to start with everybody but Sean's testimony. I'm going to start out by diffusing this by saying, "We agree that the way these events have been held in the past was not good, the surrounding property." Our test, if you look at the record, our test showed that if we were to hold events like the ones held in the past with no walls in the structure, we exceeded the noise ordinance, which is how we got to doing the engineered walls and all the other conditions of approval that we've had to prove up on since then. So, this application is for what we proposed in the proposal. It is not for what has happened in the past in any way, shape, or form. There are no enforcement actions on the property. You won't find any in the record. They've been resolved. EQ's happy. ODFNW's happy. Enforcement's happy. So the proposal in front of you, it has to be weighed against the proposal in front of you. And here, we've collected evidence. So, I just want to say that it is true that, that things were loud in the past for the, for the private parties and for the private weddings that have happened. I also want to say that this county has lots of wedding venues already approved as home occupations in the rural residential zone and one in the EFU zone. The ones that come to mind off the top of my head are Niemeyer and, let's see, I wrote it down, and the Johnson Farms. And that one's on EFU and it's operating and approved with four employees. So, that happened. So, with that, let me touch just on a few little things and I'm going to go back to Sean's arguments. The Ag and the shop doesn't have any enforcement issues pending on it, that, that other structure to the south that everybody's so concerned on, it's not part of this application and has no relevance to this application. So those concerns are something outside the scope of this application. The property, as I said earlier, continues to be in deferral. It is still being managed entirely, to the extent it was managed before, as forest operations. No trees were removed to do this operation. We're down near the area that's already been, been taken up by more residential activity. This is in a commercial business. We're not proposing any buses. Again, this is about what were proposed, not what has happened in the past. And I just, I know the board knows that, but I want the opposition to hear us say this as well. This is a different proposal than what has been done in the past. The plot plan is to scale that one up there. Anything that's reduced to eight and a half by 11 is reduced from the applicant's submitted, which was not on an eight and a half and 11. It was scaled when originally submitted. So the 11 by 17 version of that is to scale. There's not enough time to go through many of the errors in facts that I heard testified. So I would just urge you to read the application carefully. There are no buses. We have a limited smoky area. It's a non-smoking facility. That's all in the materials, okay? Water has been addressed. Plenty of water. A water expert was out there. They've addressed that. You've got those, that expert report in there. There was no alternate report by anybody, so our evidence has established water and there's no report that says otherwise. There was a mention that they hired a noise expert and that noise expert reviewed our stuff and said that it could not be done. Those are all in the record. I heard you to read them. That is not what that noise expert said. He took no measurements, any. The entire report from Al Duble is, is based on opinion and not fact. And then we came back and responded to that. So I think it's very important to understand that, that all the noise facts in the record, which do establish a baseline, are the applicant's, because we carry the burden. We're up here trying to do that. The question as to what other uses in the zone, the RR Zone and the F2 Zone, would allow similar types of traffic? I went through those in great deal in my presentation. There is the uses that were listed in the Niemeyer report, plus the uses that are allowed outright and conditionally in the F2 Zone. And you can look at those. There's some, there's some big whopper stoppers. Transfer facilities, forest operations. There's a lot of uses that would generate a similar amount of traffic. So those do exist. And now, I'll stop back at the top, make sure I caught everything else so I don't have to come back. The Ag Building was built as an agricultural structure. It has a building permit as an agricultural structure. Mr. Hett has cows. I stood in that agricultural structure. That's just a factual statement. He does have cows. I stood, I stood, I stood there in that barn when it was being constructed and there was nothing, nothing about that barn that was not an agricultural structure. And as I said earlier, even if he wanted to put chandeliers in his cow barn, he's entitled to do so. So there's, the, the structure was permitted as an Ag structure and it can be easily returned as an Ag structure, easily returned to an Ag structure in a day. So, that is, that, that whole argument, it, it's kind of far-fetched, I think. Okay. So, I only have a quick, I think it's a quick page and we'll be done with this. I hear a lot of testimony about this proposal resulting in unreasonable interference. And the applicant bears the burden of proof to, to, to prove that we will not unreasonably interfere. However, almost the entirety of the testimony is based on operations in the past. And that is not how we're proposing to operate in the future. We're operating much quieter. There's very little testimony, if any, as to whether noise was a problem the day the noise test was being made itself. And that was still without the walls, but with turning everything around. And now we have engineered walls. And now we have engineered walls. We have put all the evidence in the record that we could think of to show that as proposed and as modified by our proposal, we will be as quiet as we can be. The 80% requirement comes right out of green and they operated down there substantially the way we're operating here. And that was up there in front of Luba. He said that as with regard to what unreasonably interfere means, that the board could have just said, "Go meet the noise ordinance." Well, there are two reasons why that couldn't happen and why that's not a very good argument. One is that standard isn't just about noise. So the board couldn't have said, "Go meet the noise ordinance," because the standard is about unreasonably interfering all externalities. It's just that noise is one of those externalities. And the other reason that the board wouldn't have put that in the code is because it comes out of state law. And so you did use the same phrase. I do think, however, it is well within reason to go to the noise ordinance to establish what is reasonable as a baseline. And then from there, figure out what it is to be unreasonable. But at least the baseline as to what's reasonable is set out in some factual numbers that we've shown that we can meet. And so that has been the argument all alone, that the baseline for what's reasonable is set out in the noise ordinance. And if you can meet that, there's a presumption that it's reasonable. There are other things that maybe if you were above it, you could still prove that there was not unreasonable interference, but it does set a nice baseline. With regard to OAR 340030035, this isn't an industrial, commercial use. It's a home occupation. And there's no evidence in the record that Mr. Malone pointed to that shows that we're going to double anything, given the way we're proposing it now. So it was mentioned, but there's no, we've relied on the evidence in front of me and there's no evidence that we, even if this applied, that we violate it. There's no argument in the record. Sean said that we didn't establish a baseline. I think that the noise study will show you that we did. Took a really recorded baseline for what was out there. We dealt with it, found that there was a problem, supplemented the application to fix the problem. Heaven forbid I sit down not saying everything. With regard to the five employees, there is evidence in the record that shows exactly how this operation can be done with five employees and how they will be able to use the site. We, there's a nice table in there that shows how it can be done and there's no evidence to the contrary. Somebody could have submitted stuff to the contrary, they did not. So right now, we all agree that the applicant carries the burden, but a close look at the record will show that the applicant has put together a good application. And where problems arose, they have dealt with the problems and made sure that this entire proposal meets the elements of the standards, as those were interpreted in green, and then also operates so it does not unreasonably interfere with the neighbors. This is not a new use in the F2 zone. This is not a new use in the rural residential zone. There are other home occupations for wedding venues already operating in Lane County. We're not breaking new ground here. We just need to be consistent and not unreasonably interfere. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing. And we have discussion and action by the board. And this is our opportunity to make a tentative decision or just continue the matter for deliberation. So any discussion by the board? Questions for staff or legal counsel? Commissioner Sorensen?
Mr. Chair, at this time I'd like to move that we affirm the hearing official's decision.
Does that affirm and pass on to Luba, the appeal?
Well, it's to make a decision that we affirm the decision that was made to deny the permit.
I was looking to see what our motion options were. I wouldn't suggest, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think we want to, if we're going to affirm the decision, we want to, are we going to do that remaining silent or are we going to do that as?
I would recommend that we remain silent, just affirm the hearing official's decision.
Okay. If I might. Before somebody seconds that.
Chair, Commissioner Sorensen, yeah, you may want to refine that as part of your motion, then Commissioner Sorensen, if that is to be what you want out of motion.
So Commissioner Sorensen, do you want to, before somebody seconds, or you can just do a friendly restatement?
Yeah, I would be open to, you know, either approach, but my preference would be to have it that we're affirming the decision of the hearing's official, not the rationale of the hearing official's decision.
And to remain silent on the interpretations?
Yes.
Option two, basically. Is there a second for the motion? Seeing none at this time, it dies for lack of a section. Commissioner Stewart?
Mr. Chair, I didn't second the motion because I'm not prepared to make a decision at this point. I'd like to ask that we have more time. It's been referenced multiple times about, there's lots of evidence in the record. I've kind of pored through the close to 200 and some odd pages. Is that the complete record? So I haven't seen the complete record and so I'm not prepared to, I'd like to come out and spend a little time at land management, I guess, in a cubicle space and review some of that, if you don't mind. And I would like to also have, I mean, I really want to have a lot firmer understanding of the noise ordinance, how it applies, how land management's applied it in the past. Got a definition here, got a commercial operation being presented by Mr. Malone. We got home occupancy over here by Ms. O'Day. I want to understand the two and I'm trying to understand what's the difference. It seems like it's a commercial operation and they're generating revenue and providing a service, but I kind of want to understand, you know, how we get this, if different logic or there's different meanings. So I need more time. Needless to say, I'm not prepared. Doesn't mean I'm in the end not going to support potentially where this is, Commissioner Sorensen is, but I'm not ready to make a decision.
Can I, before I go to Commissioner Farrar, can you quickly, this is a question of counsel. I don't know where we are in the 180-day calendar relative to the applicant being eligible to take this to circuit court under a mandamus proceeding. Where are we with our need to make a decision at the local level before it can go to Luba? And our timeline and any waivers of that timeline and all this? What's our, what clock is ticking for the board?
Chair Buzzbitch, my understanding is that the 150-day time limit is either there or we're beyond. Further understanding is that the applicant has agreed to...
I think your battery died.
He says that to me, too. I just want to make that clear. He says that to other people that are of a certain age.
I would recommend that, to the extent that more time is necessary, you want to kick this over for a week or two or more, that we get from the applicant, concurrents to, I am limited for some precise...
And we would prefer to have that waiver in writing? So how do we do that while trying to make a decision sitting here today?
I'll just try to yell. I think if we have Ms. O'Day or Ms., or Ms. confirmed that today, we can certainly follow up with that thing in writing.
So as we're making this decision before we decide, you know, whether we want more time or not, I think we need to hear from the applicant whether they're willing to waive the 150 days and for how long they're willing to waive that. Because that will decide on whether we have, force our hand to make a decision today or to move on.
Mr. Stewart, how fast can you read that box?
Well, I got all Wednesday morning available. I can be out there...
Obviously, we've been doing this a long time and time is of the essence, but if additional review of that record is necessary for the board to come to a conclusion, then the applicant will waive the timeline to do so. Why don't you tell me what you think you need and I'll ask my client whether he thinks that's reasonable? Is that helpful?
Yes, I think that's helpful. And I think one of the things we need to recognize as the board is next Tuesday, we already have a public hearing and then budget coming right on top of that, so we don't have availability for an afternoon. But I think we've already closed the public hearing on this, so it would just be a matter of bringing it back for board deliberation. So I think we've got a fairly light schedule next Tuesday. Do we need to, this isn't something that needs the full 13 days of advertisement or anything to...
No, no, it doesn't.
So I think the soonest we could get to it would be next Tuesday morning as far as an opportunity for the board to deliberate and take action, but I don't know if that's too quickly for the board to actually read the record. And I haven't looked forward in our calendar to see if we're meeting on the 19th or...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, my understanding from Ms. Jones beforehand is that the next two weeks you're open for meetings. Memorial Day, is that the right holiday?
Has its calendar...
Is down. And so it may be, I guess I would recommend a 30 days, which would allow review of the record, you to conduct more deliberations, perhaps two weeks from today. And then if we need to produce a record with different or more detailed findings, there would be time to do that. I don't want to have a situation where you make a decision on the 19th and then staff is running around trying to put the record and findings together for you to sign that day.
Oh, yes, that's true. So we may need another period for you guys to actually draft the final order and us to adopt it with the correct findings attached to it.
The applicant's fine with 30 days and we're happy to draft the findings and let staff go through them as well. We can be a little bit more efficient because we don't have quite as much weight on our shoulders.
Okay, so that sounds, the board understands now what our time constraints are, so they can continue with the deliberation as to whether we make a decision today or whether we move, you know, move for more time.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the input and the leeway timewise. So Commissioner Farrar?
You've kind of covered everything for me, Mr. Chair, but I have a question regarding the original application. Now, the original application is still pertinent, is that correct? And I've been looking through the packet today and I don't see the original application in here. Is that some place available for taking that...
The original application was not in any of the materials that you received today. We can scan it and email it to you if you would...
I'd be interested in seeing that. There was some suggestion that perhaps there was misinformation given on the original application. I've not heard any testimony on our behalf, on the county's behalf, that that's the case, but...
If I can interrupt quickly.
Please.
And not on that specific issue, but you reminded me of something I want to mention. And outside of what Ms. O'Day had to say and Mr. Malone had to say today, about 95% roughly of what you heard was either repetition of evidence, I hope, and maybe a smattering of new evidence, but almost no legal argument. And so I would caution you to make any decision or base any decisions on those statements that you heard today. And whether that gets to the issue you're referring to, Commissioner Farrar, I'm not sure, but I just wanted to get that out there.
So I have a couple other questions that pertain to, as I start reviewing the record and if we choose to postpone this or deciding whether we just want to move this on and adopt the hearing's official's decision. Is there, and I don't know if this is a land use question or a legal question, but does there need to be a demonstration that a existing building that's going, that's being proposed to be used for home occupation was ever actually put in use prior to the home occupation using that structure or the legal use under the zone?
I will let our planners weigh in as well. I'll give you my two cents. What our code, which repeats the statute roughly, and I'm reading the statutory language anyway, which is 215-448, I think, it allows home occupations to occur in dwellings or other buildings normally associated with uses permitted in the zone in which the property is located.
So that doesn't establish that it had to be actually used for that existing use?
Correct. Our code is to the same effect, and that's what I was going to say, is there's no factual determination...
But it does say existing buildings, so...
Yeah, correct.
So if the building was incomplete, does that make it existing? That's...
I would suggest that may get to be a fact issue and I'm not sure that's covered in the record or not, the extent of completion of the building.
And the hearings official spoke to that issue in his...
Okay, so there is record on it, so I can review that portion of the record.
I would also mention on that issue that when we issue an ag building permit, there's no follow-up inspections done. So once we issue it, that's it. We don't go back out there.
I'm aware of enforcement actions Lane County has taken against property owners for pulling an ag permit for what turned out not to be an ag structure. And where they were cited, fined, and sometimes had to remove a building. So pulling a permit that says ag structure does not necessarily mean that an ag structure actually got constructed. So I'm aware of that issue because it's just a matter of, you know, what you put on a building permit application and versus what actually gets constructed and whether it was actually used and whether it was actually complete at the time of this application. To be an existing building, I'm going to look to the record a little bit to see about the hearings official's interpretation of that, because that's a very pivotal question in this application, I think, for home occupation. You know, and I'll take my particular instance. I purchased a property that already had a building on it that was an accessory shop building, and that's where my home occupation is located. You know, I didn't construct it for that particular purpose. So that is an interesting issue. And I'm, I'll be interested to look into the record as far as the five employees goes also and the tables that are in there. I do believe, you know, I'll look at what the applicant submitted to demonstrate that So there's a lot of question about, and this is where I felt it was reasonable that the board hear this case. And it was about the unreasonably interfere standard, which seems to be very subjective. And one of the things I always am concerned about is when a land use standard is not clear and objective. And that's, you know, for me, a really big issue because one of the things you hope to have is clear and objective standards for land use so that when you purchase a property, you can understand what you might be allowed to do with it if you meet those clear and objective standards. And also if you purchase a property, what your neighbors are allowed to do if they meet the clear and objective standards for their zoning. So when you get something that's not a clear and objective standard, that's where there's a policy issue involved. And one of the reasons why I voted to hear this as the board rather than just, you know, adopting the hearings official decision, remaining silent and letting it go to Luba to argue a lot of this stuff. I do kind of wonder, you know, we have a noise ordinance in this county that is based on, I think, controlling noise on properties from legally generated noise. You could have something that is below the noise levels of the noise ordinance at noon on a Wednesday, but if it's generated by illegal fireworks, it's still illegal. So some of the questions about, you know, what is, what is that standard? And I kind of, and so that's where I'm looking for maybe some help from legal and land use. Are we held to just our noise standard? Is that the gold test of everything? In the case of Niemeyer, it was on an RR property where churches are already a use that are allowed. that are allowed. So, you know, weddings, events venue was allowed under an exception and they compared it to the noise ordinance because it's a legal, you know, situation. So it's, I'm kind of wondering where that line is, you know? And is it because somebody's asking to do something that's not normal in the zone that you can go more restrictive than the noise ordinance? Is there, you know, where is that clear and objective standard that we have to judge by as a board, whether it is unreasonably interfering? All the other externalities also gets to be, you know, what's unreasonable? And what are the definitions around that? And what are clear and objective standards? Whether there's enough case law. Niemeyer's Planning Director's decision, that is not precedent setting as far as I understand legal land use terms. You know, even a hearings official decision isn't precedent setting as I understand it. You know, where are the precedents around the clear and objective standards for unreasonably interfere? That language is taken from statutes. So where is, what have the courts said in the past? And is there some guidance that legal staff and planning staff can give us to guide the board and the hearings officials in the future and around these decisions as to what is that standard? So I would hope we can maybe get a few answers about that also as we review this record so we can review that record with that in mind. And I do support the idea of having an opportunity to look at the record. I barely got through most of what was given to us online, the 200, and let alone that box. To fully understand everything that's involved in this application, fully understand that was part of the record that the hearings official made his decision on. You know, I appreciate Commissioner Sorensen's motion. One of the things we have to be careful about is we make the laws for land use in this county. When we decide to hear something, we also put ourselves as adjudicators of those laws after we've legislated them, which is a really bad position to put yourself in. As an elected official, you're now trying to act as two branches of government in a way. And I dislike that, having to be the lawmaker and the judge. It's not a correct position for us to be in. So I lean towards, let's just adopt the hearings official decision and punt, and we'll let Luba decide this. The only thing that keeps me from doing that is we haven't given Luba a clear and objective standard to make a judgment on relative to unreasonable interference. We haven't done our job as policymakers and legislators. And I would like to have some time to understand that. I may ultimately vote second and vote for Commissioner Sorensen's motion in two weeks from now. But I think I'll have a better understanding so that as we move forward, we might make some policy decisions to clear this up in the future. So that's my input for now. Commissioner Lichen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll make this fairly short because I think Commissioner Bozovic summed up quite a bit here. First of all, on the issue of unreasonable interference, I think that that's something I would like to delve into a little bit more. I have a funny feeling that this will not be the last time we hear or will be presented a venue like this here in the future. And the reason why I bring that up, as you know, my family's involved in the concert production business. And so Double T's been around since 1972. That's what we do and have been for a long time. This is different. And so unreasonable interference idea here. Outdoor Tony Bennett concert actually produces 95 decibels. An outdoor symphony produces peak 120. And the Motley Crue concert at Math- Mathieu Night Arena, 130 plus. So, but those are, kind of gives you an idea. But also the standards involved and also the home occupancy. That, to me, I think really is the centerpiece here because when you have 250 people involved in a venue, I'm curious on the security. It's important to have security involved. I know there's certain standards involved that I think that people put venues together. Typical 250 is you probably want to have close to four or five. Well, that uses up all your employees right there. So I, and again, it may be different for this type of venue. And so I think that that's important to kind of dive into and understand this as we move forward. But at the end of the day, I'm like Commissioner Bozovic stated, Chair Bozovic, you know, we may end up supporting Commissioner Sorensen's move to just move it up to Luba. But I think there's some pieces in here. I think it's important to dive into and ask staff, maybe to also take a look as well. But I think looking through that record. By the way, that record pales to comparison to Levi Landin in Springfield because Jolie, he showed me, I think it was 14 notebooks packed up in a corner. So now that's nothing. I didn't read the whole thing, believe me. But anyway, it's still a box. It's important to go through. But those are some things I think are important to... And it has nothing to do whether we're here to take away somebody's opportunity to create jobs, to create a venue, to create opportu... And that has nothing to do with it. We have parameters that we have to live under and that... But also understanding that our county's changing and we also have to be prepared to adapt. But also at the same time, be sensitive to the areas and the communities that venues like this one to cite. So appreciate the testimony very much from both sides today. And, you know, it's something that, I think it's something we'll learn from as we move forward. So I really appreciate that. Thanks.
Commissioner Sorensen.
I just wanted to say that putting more time into this will give us a better opportunity maybe to dig into really what I consider to be the two major issues here. And one is that, you know, this request is for a special use permit for a home occupation. And according to the materials submitted to us, the main events as proposed are limited to 250 people. And that we have two big issues here in my judgment. One is if events that have 250 people in a rural residential area and they require staff to be there, and of course, they will produce noise and they'll produce commotion. So the issue is, has the applicant demonstrated today and with their argument today in front of this board of commissioners today, have they demonstrated with the materials they've submitted, the argument that they've given, have they demonstrated that they will not unreasonably interfere with the neighbors in this area? And have they demonstrated that they will have no more than five employees on site to service those 250 people? So to me, there is an opportunity to learn more about what is in the record by the board not seconding my motion to discuss this further. I think it would be a good idea to focus in on those two things and see if in the voluminous material that the applicant had an opportunity to identify where in that record they met these standards. I don't think they did. And I don't think it's unreasonable for us to conclude they didn't today. But if we need more time, we'll obviously be getting more time because there won't be a vote on my motion.
Commissioner Stewart. Thanks for that, Commissioner Sorensen. You know, another, as I sit here and think about this a little bit, unreasonable activities, so is a wedding unreasonable for people to host at their home? I don't think that's unreasonable. I don't think having a graduation party is unreasonable. In fact, I'm going to have one here in two or three weeks, hopefully, if my daughter graduates at the house. So, you know, when I try to figure out what unreasonable is and how to apply that, that is where I want to make sure that it consists up with the decision. You know, Mr. Malone made the case that, you know, if you propose a new commercial activity in F2 zone, you got to be 10% over the ambient noise. And I'm struggling to understand how that would apply to somebody who has the right to establish a small sawmill on a piece of property and utilize their 40 acres of trees to generate product because I know that small sawmill is going to produce more than 10% of the noise that's currently present there. So I'm trying to make sure that I'm clear and objective with how these two items have been presented and how the board, previous board, because in the 10 years, I haven't made a decision on this. I didn't implement the code. I've certainly been mentioning over the 10 years that I think we should be looking at our code and trying to define it a little bit better so it's clear and objective. But I guess then we wouldn't have these problems in this situation. So, you know, I want to make sure that I have a clear understanding. And today, there's not enough information because a lot of folks said it's in the record already. It's in the record. So I want to see if it's in the record. Any other discussion? Commissioner Sorensen.
Let me bring up another thing. You know, we are sitting up here in numerous roles. But in the land use context, we're up here commonly in two roles. One is by making the rules. We make codes that say things like unreasonable interference. We make codes that say within X number of feet from a building, you can do such things. So we make, we're in a lawmaking role when we're doing that. The other role we're in is where we get a record and we get argument from lawyers about what's in that record. And they tell us what's the most important things in that record for their cases. And we're up here in a role of being a judge of particular facts, of a particular fact in a particular case. So our decision in this case will not have a lot to do with our decision in some other reasonable, unreasonable interference case. It's the facts of this case that will decide this case, that should decide this case. And we're not really making any new ruling about what the term unreasonable interference means because we're not amending our code to change the word, to change the words unreasonable interference. So a lot of time is going to be spent here to try to come up with a decision on a particular case. And I just hope that we're able to focus in on the most important aspects of this record and make a decision of whether this case does present more than five employees to service these 250 guests or not? Or whether this does or does not constitute an unreasonable interference in the property rights of the neighbors or not in this case? It really doesn't have a thing to do with how many people come over to my son's... Well, actually, he's not getting married yet. That's right. Trying to encourage that, but it's not really happening. It's not a party, this is a decision that's not going to be binding on anything. Now, will it mean in the future that if you come in with a proposal for 250 people in a rural residential, well, the board may have found that that wasn't unreasonable? And that could certainly send a message to people. But it won't decide any future case. So I think we ought to be focusing on this case and the facts of this case and whether or not this applicant has met their burden of proof to convince us. And I don't think they have. But I'm, I guess I'm going to be listening to more information and argument in the future.
Thank you. Any further discussion? So, Mr. Clark, I'm going to ask you, do we need to make a motion to have this come back for further deliberation? Or can we just set a date out in like the 19th to allow time for the board to make separate appointments, to go out and review the actual factual record? And then have a future agenda item on the 19th? I would presume that's going to be enough time from board members to... Two weeks is enough time to make a couple hour appointment and go out there and sift through the record and a couple hour, four, eight, or whatever it takes, to review the record and then come back and deliberate to a decision at that time? Do we need a motion or do you think we can just...
I don't think you need a motion. I think you can just decide with head nods basically, do you want to move this forward? You've closed the hearing.
Yeah.
Would probably be advisable to close the record with the understanding that you'll probably get a staff report or you may actually request us specifically to answer some issues for you. But close the record to the parties involved.
We have asked for, or at least I did, asked for a couple clarifications. And I imagine that the applicant and the appellant will want an opportunity to review that information provided to the board relative to this case and be able to not introduce new evidence, but to make legal argument as to whether the staff's interpretations are accurate or correct? Is that, do we need to offer an opportunity for rebuttal of any staff report that comes back to us?
I don't think that you do. As I understand, the issues that the board is concerned about have already been briefed by both appellants in this case. Yeah, we haven't really provided the board with sort of our advice, I guess, on that, on those issues. I think you can do that without providing opportunity to respond. But if you want to, that's fine as well. Just need to be cognizant of timelines, I suppose.
Yeah, that's what I was concerned about is whether we needed to try and advance this or not. To me, it sounds like some of these issues have been already argued in the record. The questions I asked were actually argued in the record significantly. And I just haven't had a chance to look through that entire box to get down to the details of those arguments. The question about what's the clear and objective standard for unreasonable interference is...
Yeah, they're not going to...
That's not going to be in the record and I don't think staff can really answer that for us.
No, there won't be an answer to that in part because unreasonable interference is apparently discretionary and not subject to that sort of decision.
Maybe a future decision. So if I have, other than, I'm sure Commissioner Sorensen would like to move forward with just dealing with this today. If there's a couple other commissioners that will agree to coming back on the 19th for further deliberation on this item?
I see.
That's my preference. Yeah, I see Commissioner Stewart and Commissioner Lichen.
At a later date, it's fine. I would sooner have it be the first of June, but I think it's fine.
Yeah, yeah, you're out of it.
I'll, I can be here.
By phone? That's right. So you're available by phone on the 19th. Yeah, I think that, I don't want to, I would love to wait till the first of June, but we have an applicant that eventually wants a local decision on this.
And we're down to the 26th.
And I appreciate, and I appreciate the applicant giving us an extra 30 days to try and come to a decision at this time. They don't have to do that. We could be kind of forced into a decision today by the applicant. And they've given us 30 days. I think that's generous. I'd like to try and keep this moving. So with that, I will close the record today on this. And we will give time for commissioners to review the actual complete record over the next couple of weeks. And this will come back on the 19th for further deliberation and a decision by the board.
As far as the decision, are you intending to make it that day? In which case we'll need written order and findings or just deliberate with a...
I think we'll deliberate and make a motion relative to one of these probably three options at that time. And which, and then we may have to come back with the actual board order on consent with the findings to the following, two weeks later because I think we're down the following week. But that should be within the 30-day timeline that the applicant's given us to... Yeah, I understand. There's going to be a delay between we make a tentative decision, I guess, what I should say on that day. The final actual order will be later when you guys can attach the correct findings to whatever we decide. Yeah, June 2nd. So with that, I think that wraps that item up unless there's any further comment or questions. Thank you, everybody, for your patience today and for coming in to let us know about this issue. To be continued. We have a lot of reading to do. And if you couldn't tell, we've already done a lot of reading. So where is my... So review of assignments is where we're at. Mr. Mokhaiske, if you've got the live mic? No, we didn't set a time certain on that. That'll, when the agenda's, the agenda will come out the Thursday before that Tuesday and that'll have an approximate time. Mr. Mokhaiske. Mokra Hyskey.
Mr. Chair, I think I have four items here. The first is, we'll be back on June 23rd for a first reading. For a first reading of, I shouldn't say with options. The mics are working now.
With options.
Related to the, the potential amendment of ordinance 14-9-19, the tobacco license and electronic cigarette regulations. So June 23rd is when we scheduled a return on the four items.
Mr. Chair, could we ask them to clear the room?
Can you hear me?
No, you've got some discussion going on behind you.
Excuse me, Ken. You guys wouldn't mind taking that outside, would you?
Not quite. We're still doing review of assignments, a few other things.
Hey, we're here all day. Try the veal.
Okay, can you hear me okay now? So I'll repeat the first one, which was, we'll be back on June 23rd for, with options for the potential amendment of ordinance 14-19 on tobacco license and electronic cigarette regulations. The second, and then I heard we're going to drop the traveling county presentation that had originally been scheduled. We have a request with at least head, three head nods for a, an item related to delegation of authority for requests of emergence, of declarations of emergency in unprotected areas of Wayne County. We had at least three head nods on to come back with an item related, a discussion related to the state bill on the statute of limitations on rape cases. And then the last item will be back on May 19th with follow-up action, discussion and action on the last item that you just concluded, order 15-04-05-05-11.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Any other assignments that we missed? Is there any other business for the board today?
Yeah, we do. We got a budget committee.
Yeah, we have budget committee tonight, but that, that old conven is budget committee, so the board meeting is adjourned.